Okay.
I'm Y.
Call the Custer County Board of County Commissioners meeting to order. Let the record show today is October the 3rd at 9:00 a.m. I would like to ask Mr. Lynn Legree if he would leave us the Pledge of Allegiance, sir. All right. Perfect.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Madam Secretary, would you conduct the roll, please?
I would. Commissioner Flowers.
Present.
Commissioner Candace.
Here.
Commissioner Prince.
Here.
Attorney Clint Smith.
Present.
And Clerk to the Board Kelly King.
Present.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate that. Gentlemen, any amendments to the agenda?
Nope.
I do not have it.
Nor do I. We might have, yeah.
No, we do for sure.
Go ahead.
Virginia said that she would not have the report ready today for the treasurer, so...
So we'll strike the treasurer's report.
Can I recommend we move it to the next meeting after this one?
That would be in Wetmore. And I don't think she'll be able to come to that one.
Well, we could... Oh, no, we do it 3/1st. I just don't want to not have the report.
Do it on the airway.
I mean, or she could just get you the paperwork and you sign it.
Yeah, paperwork would be fine, too.
Okay.
If there's any anomalies, she'd just let us know.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other amendments to the agenda?
No.
Nor do I. Audience introductions, ma'am?
Jackie Bubas goes up.
Jolly Airport.
Lynn Legree, Airport.
Jolly with an E., correct?
Yes.
Let him grab your phones.
If that happened, the professor would take your phone, put it on the ground, and stop it.
Only happens once, right?
I watched it happen once.
And then everybody else said, hmm.
I guess they just read it. Brought their phone again.
Yeah, I'm not kidding.
Thank you for saying that.
You're welcome. Come on in. Okay, Commissioner, approval of minutes? I don't believe we have any, do we, ma'am?
No.
Approval of, or Commissioner items? Mr. Candace?
I don't have anything there.
Uh, Mr. Prince?
I don't have anything since yesterday.
Yeah, nor do I. Attorney items?
Nothing today.
Thank you, sir. Administrative assistant?
No.
Uh, moving to public comment. We don't have anything for the good of the order. Okay. We just got 26 minutes ahead, just like that.
That's good news.
Yep. So we'll move into staff reports. Airport Board is first on the docket, so...
Don't ruin the run we're on.
You're, uh, you're right on time.
We've got 24 minutes.
Don't you dare do that.
That's right.
They'll still be two minutes.
I'm assuming when I left the room, it was Commissioner, and now it's Airport, and none of you have any.
Good morning.
Good morning, sir.
Good morning.
Good thing you got here.
Brenda, can you contact Seane and let her know where we're headed? Thank you.
How are you this morning, sir?
Tired. We've had a rotten month.
It's not that bad. Activity's always good, no matter what it is.
Yeah, well, it's been a lot of activity. But anyway, in September, we have sold 455 gallons. Year-to-date, we've sold 4,000. We have 2,100 inventory. On September 11th, we got fuel delivery of 2,000 gallons. And our current price is still $4.55, which is a penny higher than the average in our area, but trying to stay within your margins. On the 27th of this month, of September, I'm sorry, Lynn Legree and Bob Giacomelli and I took a trip up to Steamboat Springs to attend a Phillips 66 fuel handling training. On September 7th...
Did you learn anything?
Yes, we did. As a matter of fact, we learned a lot, especially about Jet-Aid that we didn't know.
Good.
On September 7th, I went to Montana, and I got almost to Colorado Springs when the phone rang that our M3000 was down. And they wanted to know how to fix it. And I said, "Look, I'm away to Montana. I don't know how to fix it. I'm on the road." But it was down from the 7th to the 17th.
M3000 being bought for...
Our card reader.
Pardon?
Card reader. Credit card reader.
Yep.
Taxi controls upon.
Right. I got back on the 15th, and what the problem was, was the phone line was down. I called the phone company Saturday morning, the 16th, uh, 15th, 16th, whatever. And it was fixed on Monday morning. It went down again this past Sunday.
Where was it down? Was it down on the airport property?
No, it was off property. So it went down again this past Sunday. I called the phone company and told them the phone line was down again, and they told me it would be between Monday and Friday at 5:00 p.m. It'd be fixed. So the phone man showed up yesterday and cut the line fixed.
Same place?
I don't know. He was out on the highway someplace. The phone line's working. I downloaded all my reports and went out and tried my credit card and machine. It still doesn't work. So he's going to come back out today and see if they can go through the phone system and see what the problem is. I called QT Pod yesterday, and they tried the phone. It was working going into the machine. It's not working coming out.
What's the problem with it?
It comes out on a long-distance line. So there's a long-distance problem.
Well, that last outage was because of the road bridge hitting the cable. I talked to CenturyLink, and it hit the whole south end of the valley and the airport, all of southwest and up.
Yeah.
It's on now.
But that wasn't Sunday, was it?
I was going to say, that was Monday.
No, that was Monday.
He said it went out on Sunday.
Yeah.
So it affected it twice.
That's correct. We cannot pump fuel right now. I just have such an issue when a phone company says you will get there sometime next week and give you a five-day window on a commercial business. This is terrible.
It's the same thing that they did for the residential. They do the same thing. It's all automated. They say they test it automatically, and it says nothing wrong with your line. We'll send a technician out.
This is terrible, especially for something that is so important as fuel at an airport. Someone lands, they're going to fill up. Yep. And now they're on low fumes, and they don't know if they're going to make it to the next year. This is terrible. So anyway, one of the first questions QT Pod asked me was, "When are we going to get the M4000 installed?" And I told them, I said, "Right now, it's sitting in my foyer in two great big boxes." And those boxes are not heavy. They only weigh 58 pounds apiece, but they're very big. So I'm going to have to solicit some help to get them moved down to the airport. But anyway, that's where they are. How that... Who does the installation on that once they're down there? Is that something you do, or do you... Does a tech come out to do it? QT Pod doesn't come out at field to do anything. This is charge. This is custom service to its best. You bet. Is this something that you guys are capable of doing, or do you have to hire someone? We can put it in place, but I don't want to tackle wiring that thing.
Check it out. Why aren't they planning? And they're interested to check it out to make sure it's working. I'm going to get that.
I don't get it either, but they don't...
Do you have somebody that can do the install?
I'm calling around to try and find somebody who...
Way before?
That was way before my time.
Nobody knows.
No idea. When you know, I do know. It's too cold with the wind on. So anyway, on October 15th, 15th of this month, we've got a Phillips 66 inspection coming up. I've gone over the checklist. It looks like we're pretty much ready for it, except we've got a fuel filter in our dispenser that needs to come out. So I called Matt's Pump Repair and asked him to come up to remove that filter, and they said they'd have it out before the 15th. The other thing is there's an issue, maybe an issue with the color of our nozzle handle.
We learned that at our training.
We learned that at our training.
What's the color supposed to be?
We're not sure. It's either blue or red. We know it's not supposed to be black. Black is for jet fuel. So we're trying to find out from some of the other folks in the area what color their handle is. Ours is blue. I mean, green. Nobody's ever said anything to us before, but I'm just to make sure they don't. I want to make sure it's the right color.
It's outlined before the inspection.
Whatever it's supposed to be, that's what it'll be. Another issue, we got some holes in our skylights from hail. We've got about eight of them, and they're pretty good-sized holes. So we got to get that fixed. Since the 17th of this, from 17th to 27th, we sold 308 gallons of fuel, so it's been a good month.
Even with the problems.
Even with the problems. Well, we've sold 455 gallons for the month, and...
All in front of you.
And we've got some pilots calling me almost every day wanting to know if the system's back up again. And I keep telling them, "We're working on it, but waiting on the phone."
I'll talk to Armstrong, because they deal with QT Pod a lot, and they cut the deal with us to help get this new one in here and keep the old one. We'll see if they have other people that actually do that.
Didn't know how to... Yeah, the physical placing it in place is not a big deal, like I said.
But you got to check it out. I want to understand why.
Yeah, it's got to be wired.
Somebody do that.
Yeah.
We'll find out.
So anyway, all the phone lines and electrical lines and all that's going to be hooked up. We could probably do it at the manuals about eight thick.
Is it in five languages?
Yeah, but it would be a lot better to get somebody who has done it before, so it's done right the first time. So I don't...
Yeah, I'll bet we can find somebody.
Yeah, I'm sure we can find somebody. Walsenburg just had one put in, and I've been trying to get ahold of the manager.
QT Pod?
Yes, the M4000.
All right.
So I've been trying to get ahold of him and find out who they had install theirs. So anyway, that's the way things are going at the airport.
Okay. Good. Want to talk about the MOU?
One question before you do that. Did they get... They got the fire truck leak fixed?
Yes.
Still not leaking?
Yes, it is fixed and backed.
Okay.
One other thought, too. We got October 24th is the capital improvement plan?
Yes.
Of the front range?
Yes. And we're going up to get to Front Range to talk about the capital improvement plan.
We have to put that together, but our... We need to sit with you a little bit and see, make sure how much of this sort of project we can have done before we can go forward with that.
So you can figure out what the difference is going to be.
Yeah, because we had some plans, some capital improvement plans out for five years or 10 years, and part of it was expanding the parking area.
Right.
And that's sort of going to go away. And updating the fuel system, which was on our capital improvement plan, that's going away. So we need to sort of figure out what needs to go away in our plan to present to the state.
Yeah, and for the grant process.
Right, right. And that's what the CIP plan is all about, is grant money to get things done.
So we need to go a little power outage and see where it's...
Yeah, we need to talk about that, and then I want one or two of you to go with me to the DOT when we talk about the process of applying for the grant. We talk about that a little bit.
Yeah.
Okay.
And this is probably not a good time to mention the budget. I'm just struggling with that a little bit, because so much of it is, we have no idea what we have to put down.
Yeah, like, how much fuel are we going to buy next year? We've got no idea. Absolutely not.
How much maintenance on a new system that we don't even have?
No. Because the fuel filters on jets, you know, we've got a few filters about gay big around and about gay tall. The ones for jet are about this big around, and they got like 10 different filters in there. So there's going to be a difference, and we don't know what to put in our budget to ...
Right, and that's a good point. Because I can talk to the OT-6 boys, because they're going to be a primary user, so we can see what we can work together.
Yes, yeah, and that's real important, to work with them to find, I don't know how often they're going to be coming in, how many.
Yeah, we have... I've talked to them about that, and we can sit down and make a plan. They wanted to do that with us as soon as we got knowing when they could come in, so times now.
Because there is a shelf life on the jet fuel.
Right, same as...
And so we don't know how much to order based on how many...
Is it more or less than the AM gas?
Same, nine months.
Nine months.
And...
Yeah, because you don't want to store it too long.
Exactly.
That's absolutely right. And actually, you don't have to use all your fuel in nine months. The rule is you've got to add fuel to what you have.
Keeps it fresh.
To keep it fresh, to keep it circulating. And so that would depend on how many gallons of fuel they think they're going to use during the nine-month period, on whether you get a full load.
Right, and then we'll have to watch incoming traffic, because that'll pick up as they worry it's around.
That's right, that's right. And we don't know what that will be. Right now, we've got a turbo sitting down there that could use jet if we had it and just park down there. Anyway, we do get a lot of turbos coming in.
Do you know who owns that plane sitting there?
No. Well, it's a big corporation someplace on the East Coast, but it just flew in from Oklahoma, so...
Been there for over a week, haven't it?
Yeah, it's been there for over a week.
Has the Airport Board been in contact with OT-6 directly, or has Bill been doing that?
Bill's been doing that.
So we're kind of in the... We're ready.
Yeah.
That's the next step.
Yeah.
Get together.
With the Airport Board?
Yeah. We're going to have a... The way we do that, they have their chief pilot as spokesman.
Right.
He's been here.
Yeah, he's been here several times.
We've talked together, so his contact has been made, and they're busy, so usually that contact, the meeting will have to be probably a conference call when we discuss this with the chief pilot and David Watts.
Yeah. He's in San Antonio.
Yeah, or San Antonio, Jacksonville.
So has the Airport Board met with this pilot?
No. I've met him and have talked to him. As a matter of fact, that's where we found out that there was nothing in writing on the weight limit on our airstrip.
Yes.
We talked to him, went through all our paperwork, and all the plans are there and theoretical numbers, but there's nothing with anybody's signature on it that says this is what it is. So that's why we had the...
That's why it's good we got the load test done.
And that's been done, but I haven't gotten a report back from Armstrong yet.
They haven't finalized it.
So if somebody were to call me today and ask me, I would honestly tell them I don't have a clue.
Yeah, they're formalizing it.
Right, so... So when you submitted your budget, how did you estimate how much egg you're going to buy? I mean, did you just... It was a wild guess. Okay, that's fine.
Shut my door.
Got it.
We're our best guess to make.
Right, it's what we think they might need. Well, we know we're going to need jet, some amount of jet fuel. So we took a guess of what a load of fuel would cost. And right now, I just got a pricing update today on 100 of lead. And if we got a load today, our selling price would be about $5.25 a gallon, because...
It's gone up that much.
It's gone up a bunch. It's about some stuff.
A question about the jet fuel. I'm just curious, have we checked with, like, Fort Carson and Hats? I know at the end of the summer here, we had a run on high-profile emissions using assets from, I think, Fort Carson, Buckley, and Hats.
Checking for what?
Just what, if, what their processes are, if they're going to be able to refuel at our airport.
They were hoping to.
They were hoping to.
Yes, no reason why they couldn't.
Don't be able to use the kiosk system?
Sure.
Okay. Because, you know, and I know that use is typically higher in late summer, but it seems like we're giving...
Yeah, they're looking forward to it.
Oh, good, okay. Well, if you need contacts or don't have things, I mean, I'm sure you're well-connected, but let me know and I'll...
Yeah, and we split loads sometimes with peak fuel, so...
Okay. Because I know right now they're refueling either in Alamos or Canyon City, I believe.
Yeah.
And who are they?
The guard units that fly these missions back and forth to rescue guys on the mountain.
National Guard?
Yeah, and they, we get a lot of helicopters come in, Blackhawks and things, just for training.
And we'll probably pick up more.
Yeah, I'm sure.
Because then...
I get calls every once in a while, and one of the concerns they always have is what is, what's the weight limit on your airstrip? And if it's a Blackhawk or whatever, I say, "Come on." I know it'll take a handle.
Find out where that report is, but we ought to be able to get the rough... You ought to be able to have numbers now.
Right.
You don't need the report in your hand.
With their stamped.
Hmm, yeah.
Yeah.
So we all know what we're talking about.
Want to move on to the MOU for me? You guys have seen it?
No.
Bob, you got... Bob said he presented it to you at, like, your July meeting, and you made a couple of changes?
Yeah.
And then sent it back. It just sort of got...
Right.
Actually, it was probably June meeting, because it got buried when the fire started.
Right, but we haven't seen it find it first.
Okay, so they were like...
So this incorporates his comments? Is that what you're saying?
There were two, yeah, two incorporations.
Remember what they were?
Final that Bob G. had asked for. And then a date change and a signature on the change, I think, for the only...
Yeah, we did change the date. Reflect October 3rd.
You guys need a, you know, turn out...
If that's what the...
Why don't you give them one to take?
What I have is June 21st.
Right, this morning, we changed the date.
I've already changed the date.
Well, we corrected the spelling on Mr. Jolly's name.
Not a problem.
With an E.
Got to get his name right. Yeah, they've been misspelling it for a long time, but... It would be easier for you to change your name than for...
Probably.
It's not the Jolly Popcorn Family, is it?
No.
E-wise?
I was going to say, you have an E-wise problem like I do.
Right. Chair, would you entertain a motion?
I move, we accept the contract proposal as written.
I'll second it.
Mr. Giacomelli is coming.
Then moving seconded to approve the memorandum of understanding for the emergency facility usage at the airport discussion.
What's the opening paragraph where it says Silver West Airport Butler Field C1? What's the C1 reference?
Oh, you know, that's C1 probably needs to go away. That's probably the school district.
Yes.
Oh, that must have been a boilerplate from the other one. I thought, I saw that, and I thought, maybe it's related, because the districts are the same or something, but I, so I didn't say anything.
Okay, we need to stand back.
C08 is designation for the airport.
C1?
C08 is a designation for the...
Yeah, Charlie OT-08. That's not it.
It's in parentheses right next to it, so I think that's supposed to be C08.
Should be a C08.
If you want it, or it can go away. I think you're...
Either way.
That's a good catch. It didn't come out of the boilerplate.
Jolly, what do you prefer?
I would just say it go away.
Okay. All right, was that... So we'll delete C-1. Good morning, sir.
Good morning.
How are you?
I'm good.
Good.
Thank you for letting me in late.
Oh, it's okay. We were actually...
We always bar the door, but made an exception.
Thank you, I feel honored.
We're actually in the discussion period of this MOU, so your timing's fine. Jolly, anything else, sure, where are you?
No, sir.
I would state that from a legal point of view, this is essentially an MOU that the county is having with itself since the Airport Board and Emergency Management are already...
Already within the county.
But I don't see any problem in spelling out what the agreement or the intent is. Usually, an MOU would be between two separate political entities, political subdivisions, but I don't see a problem with having this agreement like this.
I think it's to show the goodwill, and originally, we thought that the FTC might come on, but after we met, and I think that was the Mayor June meeting and followed up with their lobby on though, he said that it would not supersede any individual facilities or land use agreement. If they bring in a spike camp or need to do that, then... So it's just kind of saying that we all intend to play in the sandbox, but those agreements and cost shares would then be spelled out in a separate agreement, just like we saw in the W fire with the...
As it happens.
Club and the school, as it happens, on the hood of the pickup truck or after, as in the case of the Spring Fire, they just said, "Well, we'll work it out later."
Okay, further discussion, gentlemen. Hearing none, we proceed to vote. All in favor of approving the memorandum of understanding with the airport and Office of Emergency Management. Say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay, motion carries. Jolly, if you'd like to sign that as well. Have you been in conversations with your board with your treasurer? Have you been in conversations aboard with your treasurer, he came before the board last week?
Haven't seen, he'd rather come sit with you than us.
Yes, he's.
We, we got that.
Do you want a hard copy or you want me to email it to you?
We transferred ten thousand dollars to the airport fund.
Yeah, he's not been coming to our airport board very much.
Yeah, he said he'd been going, that ten thousand dollars was earmarked for the airport overlay, or the, yeah.
Right.
Overlay, so that's, money's gone away. We made sure that he understood and we were all in agreement that that was earmarked for the overlay and now it's no more.
Right.
He said, he and he thought the board understood that, so. Anything else, gentlemen?
No, sir.
Okay, well, thank you, appreciate it, good luck.
System is back up, so you can pick us some up.
Yes, that's what we like to do.
I'll let you know what Armstrong's contacts are. Walsenburg sounds most promising, they just recently did.
Yes, they just recently.
Okay, Office of Emergency Management.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, is Geipel still around?
No. Good morning.
Good morning.
How are you?
I'm good.
I've been spelling your maiden name all this time.
C Y M D I.
You know, I did that for a while when I was like in my teens, I decided I don't like my name.
Yeah.
And I did, and my parents hated it, but I eventually.
So did you go back to it?
I did. Should have gone back to my maiden name, but that's another story.
Been a while, how are you?
I'm good.
Good, good, good.
Sort of refreshed after my hiatus, it was good.
Good.
Barring my parents.
Yeah, circumstances being what they are, huh?
Yeah, but endeavor to persevere.
Do you have a date on the next SAR meeting?
Board meeting?
The board meeting?
Next search and rescue board meeting is tonight at four thirty. And then after that, so it's the first Wednesday. Yeah, we have a new administrator, probably gonna see some changes in leadership next year and board makeup, but yeah, four thirty, so. Mostly working on the medical director stuff. You're welcome to join us.
Yeah, I don't know, I didn't have that on my calendar.
Yeah, it's usually the first Wednesday and then the general membership meeting is the second Monday, which happens to be Monday night of the holiday, and so our general membership meeting will go ahead and continue Monday night.
So it'll be Monday?
Mm-hmm.
At eight?
Yeah, that's, at six thirty, so the board meeting's four thirty and the general membership meeting is.
For which one is it?
Search and rescue.
On this coming Monday?
Uh-huh, is the general membership meeting, yeah, the board meeting.
What's tonight?
The board of directors meeting.
Oh.
It doesn't, there's not a huge agenda for the board of directors, but there's, there are a few things they're working on. And Sue ran that last one, I was out of town, so. They did, you know, search and rescue had those real high-profile missions, talk of the state, so that was kind of interesting, I missed most of that, I was in on the first one, but I think we had a little bit of everybody with their Blackhawks in, and there's some discussion at the state level that Fort Carson bringing those two medical ships in the last time was not properly approved, it should have gone to Fort Carson, or I'm sorry, Buckley and been refused first and then probably Hats and, so, but they'll, I'll let them work that out at the state level and at the, at the National Guard level, but it was just interesting talking to, catching up with Larry Weber and some of, all went, what went on and some of it was right across the county lines in Sawatch County. And I had my report, but I had a few other things I was gonna mention, there's not a whole lot on my report, I don't know if you want me to go through that or just hit some highlights.
Oh, whatever you prefer.
Okay, well, I will, today, if it doesn't get postponed again, at twelve eighteen, we are doing our new acronym for the month, Wireless Emergency Alert System, WEAS. So you're supposed to be getting a text message, as Brian Quince would say, from the president a little afternoon today to test the national system, I don't know if it'll work. And then Abel Chavez reached out to me on Monday and updated me and we got some of the social media posts out. He requested that I just mention to you that a long-term solution is still needed and that working with DOLA is not in, in their lane and that he, you know, it's more of a governance issue and folks having authority to reach out and coordinate that, so I'll throw that in for Abel's goodwill.
Not much goodwill there, but thank you for passing on his message, yeah.
Yeah, well, I keep, I always think of what Chaz said at the meeting in Wetmore, about pouring syrup on it, and I don't know, Abel said he was having some problems reaching the Forest Service. The other, this, this federal grant just opened up on the first for the post-fire hazard mitigation grant. I reached back out to Steve Boend yesterday to see if any of that grant money can be spent on federal lands, because my guess is that it can't be, but if it could be, potentially some of that funding could go to a project in South Hardscrabble. I don't know if it's worth, you know, because if it washes out again, if we disturb that soil, it could just be, but yeah, some of the timing on this kind of funding is by the time you apply and go through twenty nineteen grant cycle, you're not gonna see it till twenty twenty anyway. I also met with Mayor Laswell from Silver Cliff, they would like to follow up on one of their grant projects, which is the Silver Cliff Ranch Fuels Mitigation Project, and so the other tie-in there with the federal funding is, could we also improve fuels reduction on the tower site there being BLM, and there's a twenty-five percent match. Steve was also gonna look at, see if the power company wanted to partner up in that. The, the match can be cash or in kind, so some of the homeowners could contribute. Crain of Verde may have an interest in that, and then the only other project, because some of that post-fire can be used for mitigation and debris management, trying to stop that, was that section off of one sixty-five where Kathy and Jack Thomas are, and then where just the next property south where the pickup wrapped around the tree. And I noticed CDOT had done, I drove down that way to my parents' house the other day and noticed that they've done a lot of work on one sixty-five, so I was out of the loop on that, but that looked good, so, you know, I'm not sure it's something that I have the capacity to support in this grant process anyway, but I did try to encourage Silver Cliff to get their EM grants account set up, get their DUNS number and start working, I think the deadline on that application's the twenty-first. And then I've got a meeting with Mark Thompson on October fifteenth, he wants to talk about our hazard mitigation plan and writing another grant to update that, which was the first project I took on, and Meredith and I had talked about maybe being able to update that FEMA document within, in-house instead of, that grant was almost fifty thousand dollars to have a contractor write that grant for us, and where our meeting, some of the goals in there, the Hermit Bridge Road project is in there, but thing, any mitigation projects, whether it's airport or anybody, if they have projects on that, especially that five and ten-year, it would be nice to throw those in there, because our plan was adopted in twenty seventeen, so I think it expires in twenty twenty-two. So basically, to get that public assistance and individual assistance post-disaster, we've gotta have a FEMA-adopted plan, so. I'm not crazy about working on the updates, but I want you to know that they're coming to talk to me and try to tell me that I've gotta start working on a plan, to update the plan, three years before the plan expires. So that one. And then today, we're going out to meet with Sky Ranch on their evacuation plan. Those are kind of like big things. The, I should have the final invoice and report in on the public health grant, closing out that money, I'm not sure how, how much they came up, I think they worked on the upper part two miles of Bill Donley, he's trying to get some of that debris out of there, so that'll be the final and closeout, and I talked to Donna Hobby about doing a handwritten check for October, because that grant has to be completely closed out by October thirty-first, so we'll miss the voucher process to do the reimbursement, so hopefully I'll have that by end of week or into next week. Kind of the biggies, getting dialed back in. The EMPD contract is signed and that eighteen thousand dollars for quarter one and quarter two should be in either by the end of this week or next week, and then that eighteen thousand dollar, eighteen thousand one hundred and nineteen dollars and fifty-one cents was public health. When it first came in, I just heard eighteen and I thought it was the other one, so there should be another eighteen thousand dollar deposit coming in, and then we'll get Q3 of nine thousand this year and Q4 won't hit until fiscal year twenty nineteen.
So the eighteen thousand was for second and third quarter?
First and second quarter. Yeah, they're, they're behind because of their fiscal year and then they were behind even a further month this year, but I gave Kelly the signed contract.
Their fiscal year in October or is it in?
Theirs is July first for the state.
Oh, they're in the middle, that's what it is.
Yeah, so we apply for our fiscal year and then, so we sign those contracts, I think you signed it in early September, maybe it was late August and they signed it in September and they're just now getting it back. And then they've already got the grant out for twenty nineteen, which is early, so Meredith and I met yesterday and just worked on our work plan of what we need to do for fourth quarter, what's gonna be in our nineteen grant application, and we'll get a head start on that, so. She also got the call-out guidelines updated, so I'm gonna try to get Chaz Clifton to sign on that first and then get everybody else's signature, should be easy, like Shannon's sitting back here. But it was just, from the August meeting, there was some concerns EMS had with responding to wildland fires and staging, and so we clarified that they're automatic call for structure fires, but not for wildland fires, so if you were there at that meeting. It ended up being a really easy fix, and then on the wildland fire stuff, the ambulance will be not initially called until they get a staging location and a scene size up, there's no point in sending them out early on until they have a better handle on what would happen.
If I can go back, is this something you need to sign up for or is it just a?
It should be automatic if your GEO, that could have been bad, I don't think I would have tipped over with one piece of paper. It should be automatic if your, if your alerts are set up on your phone, and if you, I'll leave this with you, if you wanna go to the website and check. If you get Amber Alerts on a regular basis, if you don't, then you've probably got one of your settings turned off, and it's different for every phone, I know, I'll look and try to find it and post it, but there were some instructions to do this if you had an iPhone and this if you had an Android, and I was reading the Android instructions going, oh, my, my Android's different than these instructions, so, yeah, it'll be interesting to see who gets them.
Thank you.
So if you get Amber Alerts, it should come through?
I'm thinking, yeah, it would come through. And then.
You can't opt out of it either.
Okay. We also got our FEMA memorandum of agreement, MOA, signed to bring in the iPOS feature, which is the GEO locate that we've been trying to get going for a year or two, so. We don't have the contract in place, we're waiting to see if they wanna go with Code Red or somewhere else, but Code Red did offer us like a prorated deal to try the iPOS, so I think we're getting closer on that too. But we had, we had to get, all get the training and get our certificates in and get the MOA signed, and so we got that back with FEMA signatures on it.
Good.
That was Cat Bar and Kerry Gallegos really working that, so.
Everything else under control.
I think, yeah. It's got quiet.
Meredith's gonna finish her academy on the twelfth?
Yep, she graduates next week, it's gonna be the last academy, the way they have ran it and the way they've done it, they're gonna restructure and do like a condensed week or two version, so, yep, she'll be graduating, I'm sure she's one of the brightest students in the class, and she's pretty awesome, but she'll be done with that, and she and I talked about some goals and things, and so hopefully I'll be able to sneak in some time and.
Do you do a formal consultation?
You know, I talked to Donna last week about should I, and she said, you know, it might not be a bad idea to do that.
It's a good idea.
Yeah, yeah, so I don't know if there's a template or if you can use any template.
There is.
Is there a?
To talk to Donna.
Okay.
It's a little form you fill out.
Okay.
It's not hard, but it helps you set goals and something to compare to, it's a good deal.
Okay, yeah, and I know even on my review, it pretty much, one of the goals was just straight out of the EMPG, so, yeah, so I will, I'll get that template from Donna, and I did talk to Meredith about doing that yesterday, so.
I wondered if we need to do, give her some kind of acknowledgement, maybe at our meeting on the thirty-first, we meet the twenty-fourth, but that's down at Wetmore.
Yeah, for finishing, for finishing the academy and, yeah.
And this is the academy, what is?
This is the Emergency Management Academy, I'm trying to think of the, the formal name, you have to take a set, you take an Emergency Management Professional Development Series first, and then you take the academy, and so what they've done is they've used a lot of the Homeland Security money and brought the training in-house instead of sending people off to Maryland, which is what Kristy Coleman did back in the day, they decided it was cheaper to, to bring people in and bring the training in, so. I'm not sure, but how big her class is, she will do, just like my academy, she'll do a mock scenario with an EOC, it's based on Mesa County and a flood situation, and there's two municipalities and then Mesa County in the scenario, and I'm not sure which team she's on, but her final day of the academy will be a scenario, and they throw everything at them in the book, and then they'll have a gradu, a luncheon and a graduation party and photos, so if I can get, I'll ask Kristy Coleman or somebody to get us a nice photo of Meredith getting her certificate and get that sent to you.
Can I suggest on the thirty-first, we have a small certificate of achievement honoring her for that, signed by the commissioners?
Are you a good idea?
Yeah, that's on the thirty-first, okay. I'm, I know that's midday, I would like to try to sneak out of here even half a day on the thirty-first, it's my mother's eightieth birthday, but.
Oh, I see, because you want to start trick-or-treating early.
No.
Yeah, we could do that during the commissioner item at nine o'clock.
Okay, and then, yeah.
Brenda, is that something?
Yeah, I need to.
Please, thank you.
If you could.
Yeah, we need to.
Know exactly what.
The language.
Yep. Yeah, that'd be great.
I think when we have an employee who has a major accomplishment, it's nice to recognize him.
Could send it to the paper, too.
Okay.
Yeah, make a press release when we need it.
Look at the picture.
Yeah, that's why I'll get Kristy to get the, usually the Director of Emergency Management is the one who's handing out the certificates, so they do group photos and then they do the individual.
Yeah, shaking hands.
Yep, yeah, so I'll tell her to.
That's a good idea.
Yeah.
That'd be a fun way to start three days worth of meetings in a row.
Somebody needs to bring the apple fritters.
So, yeah, that'd be great.
Volunteer you.
I'll do it.
The apple fritters, okay, yeah, no.
Write that correct language to Brenda, that'd be super.
Okay, I can do that.
Okay, and then certainly want to invite you to be here as well.
Okay, no, I'd like to be, she's, she's a great person to work with, so.
Good.
All right. Well, thanks.
Thank you, ma'am. See you later, have a good day.
Okay, thanks.
You bet. Thank you.
My tea.
It's turned.
It. Morning, Sheriff.
Hi.
You notice I said morning right?
You ready to?
They're going to some big, long, drawn-out, good morning.
Oh, yeah. She doesn't have.
Morning, time to get home?
Okay, thanks, bye. Uh, it was eight thirty, quarter nine, something like that. Still a lot left to do though.
To Kelly.
Were there arrests involved or just the?
To go to France last year, ten days or whatever it was, parked our pickup on the front of our son's house off-street.
Got a little hundred and seventy, I don't really find out.
White, I don't know.
Some planes.
Sitting on this.
It's a massive crow.
The sun.
It's pretty good size, it wasn't as big as the last one we took out of there, but this was the same place that the feds were supposed to.
Wheel fell off the street.
Seized the home.
Dropped it on the concrete, couldn't, just ran right into my side of the truck.
I would be reaching out to Mr. Smith there. Their future, see what we can do.
So it was in the shop, they did a good job fixing it with their.
Well, good.
You got the insurance company?
Well, that guy's insurance is.
Well, yeah.
And it was there.
Should we just take a couple minute break, gentlemen?
Why not?
Stand in the German, for about three minutes. Good.
I'm ready.
Good morning.
How are you?
Well, thank you.
Good to see ya.
Thank you, sir.
Good morning.
I already got you.
Duty again.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Been busy.
Been a very interesting month, definitely, definitely an interesting month. So we've, as I outlined there, the most, the biggest projects we worked on this month were the high-speed fiber installation, the nine-one-one changeover, camera retrofit, battery backups for the cameras, and then some more, some new computers installed in certain places, so it's, it's been fun.
Could you see a difference with that, the fiber?
Absolutely, we're, we're not seeing any, we're not seeing any buffering issues, everything's going through smoothly, we are peaking out somewhere around ninety-six megabytes per second. I've completely unplugged CCOM, which was one of the things I wanted to talk to you all about today. I still get notifications. And we would have been down...yesterday would have been terrible. There would have been no live streaming whatsoever if we'd been still on CCOM. So there was...yeah, it's been...
So this is coming over CenturyLink?
This is coming over CenturyLink fiber line. So it's very stable, very consistent. Same upload speed, excuse me, 94 to 96 megabytes upload and download speeds.
Really good.
I have it split between the county building and the sheriff's office. Comes in on the line down into the basement where my equipment is there, all with battery backups. So if the power goes down, that will stay consistent. Then it's sent over to the sheriff's office, also with battery backups, to make certain that that internet's connection stays stable. So we're doing a lot...we're doing a lot better. It's really nice. Yes. Thank you for reminding me of that. So in the process of doing that, we were able to get what is called a static IP with the fiber. So our accounting programs, our accounting softwares are going to be communicating over that very soon. It takes a little while for ACS, for our accounting software, to update, but they're going to be switching over...or they're going to be using that. We're going to keep the CenturyLink backups, just in case, because in the past, when fiber has gone down, the CenturyLink DSL has not necessarily gone down. The fiber goes down much less often than anything else does. So we're going to be keeping certain things as backups. But that said, on the ongoing...excuse me. Yes, the ongoing projects on the second page, DSL, wireless, internet, fax, phones, we're going to be...I'm going to be basically analyzing where the data is flowing and finding where we can shut down certain lines now. There's about...I know that there's at least three DSL lines that we can consolidate into the fiber right now, which would be about $150 to $200 a month savings, that type of thing. So it's just a process. As I shift systems over, certain systems want their...have used the CenturyLink DSL, their static IPs, their addresses consistently for years, and they're going to have to, you know, change over a little bit. So it's an ongoing process, but we'll be moving forward that way.
Do you have an archive for our official records? Is it kept somewhere digital?
Of...yes.
Anything?
Absolutely. Yes, we have multiple backups. So...
Is it here or is it on the cloud?
Certain...there are...we have...so I have...basically I have standalone hard drives. I do have cloud-based backup. And I do have a standalone...a set of standalone hard drives that are removed from the site and stored in case something catastrophic happened here. Maybe we have to replace the data from another location.
Are we able to withstand...let's say a fiber outage goes. Do we have to stop business in the clerk's office?
The fiber?
I don't know. I'm just...what would stop us from executing permission here if electronically something happened?
Well, if CenturyLink went down completely, which has happened, let's be honest, then we would actually have to stop the data transfer. I would guess that the DUMV would not be working anymore.
Yeah, except we're on a separate...
Yeah, we are on a separate...
We're still over CenturyTow, but we're separate. So like when that line got cut in Denver the other day, we were down all day. So...
So there's no way that we could...
But we were still up up here.
Because they're on a version... Enter data and then upload it later. But if there's something they need to pull in order to complete a transaction, they couldn't...
That would come to a stop. That would come to a stop. The only way to keep that...
Is that the only thing we have is just her motor vehicle thing?
No, we have DHS. And then we have the other...we have the ACS system, which is our accounting and our assessors programs that keep track of basically land ownership, that type of thing.
And our elections.
Yes. Yeah, the elections.
But we wouldn't go down on elections.
No, that would be...no. No. The ACS program is a...we used to have servers down in the basement that housed our computing and accounting software. Several years ago, they moved those all to Syracuse, New York, if you ever hear Syracuse mentioned. That's because that's where the accounting servers are now. There are secure terminals around the building that only certain computers can actually access the ACS system and enter data. And that goes through a very, very specific DSL communication system down in the basement. And so that's going to be changing over to the fiber. We're going to keep both of them, actually. One's going to be constant and one's going to be backup. But, excuse me, if that goes down, yes, everything stops, unfortunately. There's just no way. They won't take data through CCOM. They...Chuck tried that on numerous occasions to set it up so that CCOM could transmit the ACS data. They won't do it. So it's going to be a secure line from CenturyLink, either DSL or the fiber.
Don't go into any details since we're public and live. Hacking? Do we have...
I have...
Do we have systems in place to help?
So I have two firewalls in the basement and then another firewall between the internet for the sheriff's office. So it's the...well, we have a couple of different pieces of hardware, but yes, that is a huge concern right now. So...and I was just made aware, as you see, by going through the CGIS Lasso training, Criminal Justice Local Agency Security Officer, where I am...I'm going to be taking a test and becoming the Lasso officer for the dispatch center. And they're telling me certain other compliances we need to be into. So I'll be moving towards that as well.
Great. Thank you.
Let's see. What's up?
I'll be treating you okay.
Everything's going well? Absolutely.
Anything you need that can help you do your job better?
A day between Wednesday and Thursday and a day between Friday and Saturday.
That I can't...
Yeah, I know.
Good. Called Saturday and Sunday.
That's right.
This is our...I know Brenda's been working with you. Conference call pedestal.
Yeah, she told me I'm very excited about that.
And we ought to be able to move that from room to room, really, and plug in and have a conference in her office.
Right. I was...I'm very excited about that. Apparently it works with both data lines that we use and analog lines. So that's exciting. So it'll go to Wettmore, too.
Great.
Excited as well.
Election season coming up.
I am recording the cameras, recording the ballot boxes, and all of those are going on to a hard drive right now.
Be sent to Matt in the yard?
I've been working with Peggy to set up her...we lost the election server, which they sent us another one, which was good. Very quickly they got that out. Let's see. Information's been updated on the website for Kelly and Peggy about the dates and all that. So, you know, that's going to be exciting.
And you came in and recorded the planning and zoning meeting yesterday, planning commission meeting?
Yes. That's traditionally done so that Jackie can type up the notes from the meeting and present them at the next meetings.
It's a workshop, right?
I don't think it's a workshop. I think it's just a...
It's a commission meeting.
Yeah, it's a board meeting.
Thank you for doing that. I appreciate it.
There was talk of using the camera and actually live streaming it.
Yeah.
No. They vetoed that pretty quickly.
It runs a little different.
Just a little bit. Yep. Maybe a site of government. I don't know if everybody wants to see that.
Well, I know they took time out of your day yesterday to do that. So thank you.
It was nice. I just like to make certain ones smoothly, so.
Anything else?
I believe that's it.
Questions for Chief Director, gentlemen? Thank you, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks for all your work. I know we don't have a clue about what you're doing, but...or I don't, anyway. Thank you.
All right. Thank you all. Do well.
Well, I wonder if our resource finance person would like to come forward with that big old stack of paper.
Yeah, five trees.
Good morning. How are you?
Good.
Thank you.
I know. It's okay. Just don't make me be married to Cliff.
Sorry, Donna.
I can't hope Cliff doesn't hear that. I meant that in the nicest way.
I'll bet you did.
I love you, Cliff. I just have my favorite hobby, and it would be the Jeff, not the Cliff. See? I got to save.
You may go right ahead, ma'am, if you would.
Here is the budget.
Or shouldn't we have some kind of a firework bells and whistles?
Something.
Or...
A tree-cutting ceremony for the...and I brought you one. Do you want me to put it in your drawer or do you want it here? Okay. Thank you.
Is this going to be on the website?
Yes. As soon as I get back there, I will. Vernon will put it. He's got the scan of it. But they got to see it first.
Obviously, it represents a lot of...
A lot of hard work.
A lot of hours.
A lot of angst. I turned the sheet around this way, just in case you guys wanted to balance each one or see what you were doing as we subtracted off. Just tried to make it just be a little bit different.
More user-friendly.
Yeah, a little bit so you weren't having to switch it around. But it's on the Custer County gov.com, the finance page, and then it's under the 2019 preliminary, almost.
Will be soon.
Yes.
So this is just for the record. This is a presentation based on input you've got from each of the departments against the last year's budget. The proposed...what you think of proposed revenues are, I should say.
Yes.
Based on history and what we've got.
Right. And I did not change the revenues much.
Right. That's good. And the revenue estimates, would those come from JD?
No. Like, the sheriff would give what he thinks his are and would tell of new grants. Alyssa would give for the health department, her new grants. And so those would be what they know or would...
Project.
Would project. JD gives the assessed valuation. Well, each mill, I multiply that. So then I get that by that. Of course, the treasures fees, you know, all of those come really from the assessed valuation and what each son gets for mills.
And the estimated current of 2018 is year-to-date or estimated at the end of the year?
It is...it's estimated what it will think it would be.
At the end of the year.
End of the year. And the program didn't work quite as well as I would have liked. Those were hardcoded in. You know, let's say that the attorney had said, you know, I passed on two different meetings, so I know I'm going to have that 500 left. He could not have reflected that for me. He would have had to have written that down or just left it.
You'd have to enter it yourself.
Right. Because they couldn't change. It was hardcoded in. So that would be a change that we would want to have.
So just to hit the bottom line, the requested revenues from the different areas versus the anticipated income were in a negative 657, basically $658,000.
Correct.
To balance, we need to figure out how we're going to handle that cut. Okay. Well, we got all work cut out for us. And you reflected a 1% increase of salaries across the board?
Correct.
Other than elected officials, of course. You know what that 1% equals? Just an idea, approximate how much money that is that's in the budget?
I believe it was about $33,000 overall funds.
Seems like that would be...had talked about it.
About that it would be.
Blessing. So if history repeats itself, we're going to see a lot of you in the next few days, aren't we?
Yes.
Good.
And you're going to be nice and everything's going to be rosy. That's what I'm feeling.
It's going to be easy. We'll just take it out of the sheriff's office.
Oh. And you guys go ahead. He carries a gun, so y'all just feel free. And I have a lead foot, so no.
Were there any new FTEs in this budget that you're aware of or can recall?
I believe Road and Bridge had one. And OEM is asking for part-time to be full-time. And the IT is asking for a part-time. And then everything else, I believe, has stayed the same. I believe that's it.
Thank you. Appreciate that. So we don't have in this budget...I'm just asking. I'm not saying it should be there. I'm just asking. But we don't have a record of 2018's requested budget, only this estimated current?
No. But the 2018 is on the website, and I was bringing a copy with me so that...
Obviously, we've got our copies as well.
But yes, no, it is not. Because a lot of things could have changed that someone did not use the money or needed more. You know, something could be different than what that initial. But I was going to bring that in so that we could reference that.
Yeah, it would be nice to have what was spent in 2018. We don't have it completed yet, but it's...
Well, I'm hoping I can balance out and have the sheet through September's expenditures and revenues to see if I've overestimated or under...maybe that that would be. But I'm having a little bit of trouble getting all the finished paperwork to balance out first before I can do the accounting part on that. So I'm hoping I can...
Is part of that mine?
No, you're good.
Oh, good.
Well, we know that yours is the conversion, like the really bad word on there.
This looks good. Thanks.
On there. Welcome.
Anything to jump out at you that you'd like to point out to us that...and obviously I'm looking at this for the first two minutes here, but is there anything that...
Do you know, I don't think anybody asked, you know, honestly, with the numbers there are, it is very, very...not very different from last year's. And this had the elected officials mandatory statutory raises. So it's really close. So I believe people maybe were actually even asked for a little less this time. But I think they were a little tighter, maybe.
Pretty good job by...they all did.
On there, I think so.
No, go ahead. I was interrupting you.
Do you have this electronic version? So I can play with it on my computer. Would you email it to me?
If you go to Custer County...
Oh, it's on the line.
Yep. You can just pull it up right there. Yep. You absolutely can. I could email you what I just sent, but...
What program is this in? What software is it? Is it Excel spreadsheet?
That's just an Excel spreadsheet is what that is. Last year it was Lotus to Excel. So this time it was Excel.
So how do you keep it? You don't want somebody getting in the...where's the official?
I...on a flash drive, yeah. I have the copy myself locked in one of my filing cabinets. Yeah, because, boy, I don't want to start that over again.
So when you post it on the website, it'll be Excel?
It's just a...it is a scanned...
PDF is the way you ought to be posting it.
Yeah, it is a scanned copy, so it can't be changed.
You won't be able to play with it, Jay, but you'll be able to see it.
And so when we meet, the material you bring with you, you will have all the departments' individual budgets. So if we said, well, where did...how did this number...how do we arrive at $19,000?
And the parties themselves bring their documentation. You know, the year before, we had a huge pile of paperwork that went with, and this time we do not. That people...they were given the choice, and they chose to not use those on there.
So we will not have a copy of that when we sit down with...
On there is...
A particular...
The sheriff maybe had four pages. Let's see, Brenda has all the conservation trust. That's probably it, really, no one, they just, they just didn't do it.
Okay.
They just did not.
Okay. I guess a question for the commissioners, do you think in the future that would be something we should request so that when we do look at these numbers, we have some idea of what they represent?
Might be good. It may, though, we need to see how it goes because they're gonna bring stuff with them.
On there.
Unless you wanna do homework before...
Well, let's assume Donna's coming for an extension. She's our new extension person. She may have the documentation with her.
Right.
But that doesn't mean we're gonna have it.
Well, what happened last year was really hard, is I did send it all out and it was like in excess of 400 pages. So when you got your budget and put it in your little book, then trying to figure out where to put all those pages so that you could access them at the time. I mean, we spent a huge amount of time going, and it was, not that it was wrong, because people could look through them and state their case where you could think...
But you've asked them to bring in what they have, and they ought to have three copies and...
On there.
Doubt it.
And I have not.
You oughta ask them to if they're not.
I guess my other question would be, and maybe we can implement it this year, but certainly for next year, should we have access digitally of those documents so that you sit down with your budget and...
I could print them off for my audit trail, for my budget trail, and then just email them to you and you could either just read them. That would, that would probably be easier than, because the pile was huge.
But what you're saying is, for a lot of departments, you're just getting dollar figures.
Yes.
You, I couldn't ask you now, where did, where did extension come up with this figure?
A lot I could...
But they have their bins, but you have that, don't you?
Correct. Well, it just depends, like, Kelly made no different changes. Hers is just the standard budget, the standard people, the normal things, so she did not give me any other documentation. It was just those sheets.
Right.
The sheriff, if he changed anything or wanted a voice met, he did fill out a few forms. The conservation trust, you wanna know who those people are so you could look at their background. But really, most people just, are just kind of the same. The attorney gave a letter, just...
Well, let's use Roden Bridge for example. So we go through Roden Bridge's budget, I look at it, excuse me, ahead of time. I have no idea if he's put in for another FTE or not, looking at his dollar figures, correct? The only way I'm gonna know that is if I see his budget worksheet.
And he, I did not get budget worksheets.
Right, but I'm just saying...
Well, and those were on the website. Those were some of the choices that they could have chosen to do. I would know that only because I know how many people I pay.
Right, exactly. But we, as commissioners, would have any idea, but that's why I asked you specifically about FTE, because it's not gonna show up in this budget.
No, you would not.
That's good.
But it's required, as department head, that if you want a new FTE, you have to fill out the budget worksheet that says you want a new FT. So in my mind, if I want a new FT and I don't fill that out, you say you can't have it. You didn't, you can't rule simple direction.
Right.
Good luck next year.
But we wouldn't even know that.
Pretty quick, the department heads won't be able to follow directions, I would think. If you're a department head, you should be able to follow directions.
Yeah. Tom's hitting on something and it has to do with, we had a meeting last week.
Well, is that unrealistic?
Did we send a letter to them, ask them what we expected them to come to the meeting with? What did we do?
No, that email's not going out.
See, the...
No, on the web...
Because here's the issue, and Tom's hitting on it, is each of these have bins, and what we're trying to do is we're gonna make trades. We want everybody to participate, the department heads, to understand and what they're seeing from the sheriff, from Kelly, from Roden Bridge, et cetera, so that when we, we have to, we have to take some cuts in order to make this budget. And so we've gotta make those trades across bins. So I wanna know what his priority list of must-haves, wants, and nice-to-haves is, so that we can see where that cut line is. If we ask them to take a hit of 15%, show us where that cut line is, if it was required, what is on the bottom and top of that cut line, so we can, they can argue with us over why that's more important than Kelly's is. So how, is that going out before this meeting?
That would go out to...
So that they understand what to come to the meeting?
Now that you know what our numbers are and what they need to cut, the letter would go out now.
Right, that makes sense.
Because it could have came in at nothing needed to be done.
Sure, and they're gonna show, like Shannon said a minute ago, they have to justify the new dollars that they need, and if one of them happens to be hiring a new FTE or not, that would be something that, that's a must-have, you can defend that, that's fine, but I wanna know where that cut line is, and if that FT's buried in there, that's fine. Above it, but we need to make those trades.
On there.
And I think that we just gotta make that clear to the department heads, and that way, we have participation. It's not they're coming in and we're gonna hammer, hash in, and in a vacuum.
Absolutely.
And then what's Kelly doing, so that she can see the difference and they can help us.
So if I give you a sheet of paper that says, you know, "I put so much in my operating supplies, but this is what I pay for out of my operating supplies."
You have to have, yeah.
To break it down a little more.
So, you know, you might have, maybe on the cut line, it's going across where you needed a new computer or whatever, whatever, and you can argue with us, is that really, can you get by or not? Is it a thing that you must have to complete your mission, period? That should be up there in your must-haves. And then you've got the nice, the nice-to-haves that you would like to have if you get the budget that you think you're gonna get. And then there's the wants. So anyway...
So you could probably print off your extra sheets if you have an FTE or you need a new computer, 'cause all those sheets are part of that, right?
Correct.
So print off those sheets and bring them with you.
The challenge we have is, so you just got the budget, and I haven't seen it, I don't know what it looks like, but I mean, it's six days we start budget hearings. Now you're asking me to come in with a whole new set of parameters that I haven't even seen yet, and I'll have six days.
The only parameter...
I'm telling you, that can't happen. That's not enough time for me. I mean, it takes me five to six weeks, the budget.
Shannon, you've got your budget, you know what you've got.
No, I know.
The only parameter is if you've got 6% less, what are you gonna drop out? That's all we're, that is.
Right, right. And so then I have to go in and say, "What am I not gonna do? What 6% am I not gonna do?"
Right, right. Or, that's, that's correct. Can you get by with not buying as many tires for your cars? Or whatever, however you've got your budget.
Yeah, I know, I follow you.
But I feel it will be empowering for people.
Otherwise, you'd rather do that than have us to say, "Well, okay."
Yeah, absolutely. No, I mean, I think that's part of the process.
We just gotta make sure you understand that, and Kelly does, so that we can make those trades. The good news is, it's not millions of dollars that we gotta cut here.
So, I'm noticing the Custer County Kids Council, is that a new budget item that's never been used, that's never been requested before?
And that's Kathy Clark, and it is a 100% match. So if we took it out of there, then I would remove the revenues and then it doesn't exist with the county. And a lot more than you would ever know, do we have grants, since the sheriff's here, he has about $25,000 pot that is grant money. So if you were to pull half of that out, then you would lose half of the revenue from that, so you would have actually gained nothing, which is sort of a bummer, you know, too.
Okay. So what's the best way to go to move forward for this part with all this?
Phew, glad I'm not a commissioner. Yep.
So we got...
Well, that's close to 10% over revenue versus requests. That's very, very significant. And if most people were very realistic on their budgets, it's gonna be 2019's gonna be the only year.
And that's what the job is, is to sort it out.
With minimal growth, because we're not gonna have any money to do much with other than to limp by and get through 2019 and hopefully can do something better in 2020. I mean, I don't know how to say that nicely, but this is grim.
Right, and it is. It's, you know, because we don't wanna use fund balance for day-to-day operations. We just don't want that to happen.
We're not a favor of that.
But then I actually have something for you to think about that I did not think about. On reimbursed expenses, as I added a little, because I know about the tower money coming in for Vertamont, but what about the others? Does anybody have any idea on some of that revenue? If you could think about that, because that is not posted in here. I just did not know, and I don't know...
Like my election reimbursed?
What are brand-new things that we're going to be charging for services.
Like Lookout Mountain, just got some grant.
On there, yeah.
How about a new 18, 10 tower?
18 or details to put in.
Because that would be revenue that...
Right, and they're gonna favor it.
That would offset some of this.
But we have no idea when that'll actually start, so again, we're in the same boat as department heads.
Yeah, I just couldn't, yeah, I just was, you know, that we could just put on there.
A big hole puncher, like a puncher hole-in- hole-in, I don't know what some of those, just curious.
Do you have a hole puncher?
I do.
I use Jackie's, I didn't steal it to come over.
It's on a big one, but it works pretty good.
Actually, I have one that holds better than that, I'll use it.
Wait a minute, Jay, bring it in here.
Damn. Put that thing away, Brenda.
I have one too.
Next year, could you please print them on punch?
I thought about punching them, and then I thought...
You can buy punch paper, though, can't you?
Yes, you can.
And it's a lot more.
It's pretty expensive.
It's pretty expensive, actually.
It's a budget item in and of itself.
And since I get no cash, yeah. Well, so far, no complaints on the micr based on the optical, so that might be my big savings, yeah, so we'll see how that goes for me.
Did we have a line item? I know you and I talked about matching grant funds and another. That wasn't capital improvement.
For...
Matching...
Yes, I believe, look in Commissioners, I think Commissioners, maybe 311? Phew, this is a test.
I just remember talking to you about it, but I forgot the exact wording.
And I can't remember if I called it Community Outreach or Grant Match or...
311, thank you. Yes, Community Outreach, I thought of that.
And you know, the good thing about that is when we put that, we show the revenue or vice versa. If that doesn't get spent, you know, we had it just in case, or if we only needed 5,000, but it's way better than changing up in the middle. I need a blank.
Jay's the polar bear here, I was just having to open.
And then too, just as a, like a warning, on Alyssa's, just as an example, I believe 60% of hers is all grant. So, you know, even if she's showing a huge budget amount, there might be only $200 that she could lose without...
6% of public health is...
Is grant-funded, and so...
I really need, I'd like to know that from all of the departments, so I can see...
Well, I only know that because I do a state audit for her, and that's a question they ask. No one else would that come up. I mean, with Kelly's, that wouldn't, 'cause Kelly would know it's her one thing or something.
That makes a big difference on these numbers, if I know that there's matching funds.
And Human Services is another place, that we will never be able to remove that 73 because they're 80/20, 50/50, 40/60.
That'll come out in the discussion, though, because when we draw the line and they say, "I gotta have this," and, "Oh, by the way, half of it's coming from somebody else," that's part of their must-haves.
And so those are, so it makes it trickier. It makes it a little trickier than one would think. Just in case it didn't already seem horrible, I'll just make sure you really don't lose sleep.
Well, those grants will show up on the revenue side, correct?
Correct.
So we can't panic at some of those numbers, too, we look at the revenue side.
Right, well, and like, I think most people bring in that they show here's their grant, and they spend it out of 203 or 212 or whatever their choice is, and that it's 100% or 50. But, so anyways, just so you knew, the number has its reflected, is not really maybe the number, because it's grant money, so...
So we have to cut 658,000?
Yes.
By 1030, 1030 we'll have that.
Over what they've proposed so far.
How much?
600,000. 600, yeah.
Six, sorry, 600 and, yeah, 658.
758, almost. That's what I said.
Well, if we could have taken ownership of everything I looked at yesterday, we'd probably balance it.
On there.
Sell it.
Well, I think Commissioner Prince's question stands, and it's illegitimate, where do we go from here? Obviously, I think we had agreed to send an email out after looking at this budget to indicate to the department heads where we're at. So that's the first thing, and then I guess, obviously digest this between now and October the 9th.
Well, and hopefully, when you send the email out, maybe somebody has, you know, a $100,000 project, that they'll say, "You know what? If that's the case, then just, we'll just take that off right there." I mean, I honestly did not look at each, each department's budget to say, "Wow, gosh, that's, wow, that was a lot." I just put the numbers in.
That's the value of putting the email out, saying, "What do you really need?" It's gonna be a 10%, 12%, whatever the line's gonna be.
So how would we wanna do that? Do you want Donna to put it out? Do you want Vernon to put it out? Do we put it out?
I believe it needs to be from the commissioners.
Yes.
I think...
All right, so...
Maybe if you gentlemen are meeting over this, we can just sit down real quick and...
When the meeting's over, why don't we spend a few minutes?
Before we adjourn the meeting, we can...
That's what I meant, compose it later.
On there, but I think it will go much smoother, and I feel that everyone will think you are respecting them a lot more, rather than just removing money.
I said this last time we spoke about it, I am a huge proponent of having, this is a county issue, so requests well over above what revenues are gonna be, and having input from the departments to help us figure out how we're gonna make it balance. It's exactly the way to go. I sat through budget hearings here before as a commissioner, and they told me, "Yep, sorry, you're not getting another car," you know, or something like that, and you go, "Now, wait a minute, the car that I have is dead, I have to have," you know, the conversation didn't really take place, so I think having the departments come in and help us solve the problem is, A, immensely respectful, and B, we'll figure out where we can go from here as a group, as opposed to three of us going, "Sorry, you don't get that."
I believe that as well.
So it's a respect thing, in my opinion.
Well, I think Commissioner Kanda mentioned it the other day in our workshop. We wanna try to communicate to all the county, particularly the department heads, we would rather have their input than us sit here and just start chopping stuff.
Exactly.
I'd rather the department heads, they can't do it, I mean, it could, I guess, as a cooperative group, them solve this problem instead of the commissioners solving it.
That makes it a lot easier for somebody, "I'm gonna fall on my sword, we have to have this," and then realize that they, they're arguing over something that, over here, is more important, and they would feel foolish having tried to die on them.
But the problem is, they're not gonna know that without meeting together.
That's right, and that's what the value of this is.
The one weak link here is if all the department heads sit down and said, "Okay, this is, obviously, this is public knowledge, this is what I've requested," I could give this up if you have to have that.
Right, that's what we're gonna do in this meeting. That every one of those department heads better be there.
But on Friday, you know, on the callback day, you know, if you were to say...
Or somebody represented.
If you were to say, you know, that maybe called back on the Fridays, or, and say, "These are possibilities," when they're here, if they were to come back, but, you know, there's just not enough time. I mean, we would, we could do, we could start in June... and just barely have the budget done. I mean, it just, you just, it just has to.
This is working fine, it's just.
Well, the timing is statutory, I mean, I care what the sheriff's saying, I mean, this is major, major changes we're gonna ask, but you could not give this to us yesterday.
That's right.
Nope, it has to.
By law, and you wouldn't get it till today by law.
Right.
And you have to have it done by a date certain according to law.
This is as close as we can get to a discussion.
And maybe that's what the legislature was thinking when they did that, go, don't mull it over, just start going like this. I don't know what they were thinking, obviously, but you're right. I mean, it's impossible for you to come out in two days, something that took you five weeks to put together and slash, I'm gonna say ten percent, but we're not talking ten percent across the board, we're talking about summer long line, ten percent.
Total's gotta eat that ten percent.
Now, I may have misunderstood, Bill, you said that, well, that's what the meeting's for now, which meeting are you talking about?
The budget hearings we're gonna have, you know, they're gonna be presenting, we're gonna discuss each one of these. Now, in a perfect world, and I've seen this before, you have the cognizant department or division, or whoever we wanna call it, is there and they participate and they want their membership is part of the, if they're part of the whole unit, they have a vested interest in having us balance this budget for the best of the county, that's our job. And they need to see if Shannon has a big request for some new piece of equipment, whether it's an office, a piece of equipment, and so does Kelly, which one has a higher priority for the mission at hand to have right now, this year? Can it wait, can we find money somewhere else? If you can't do that, then we, then, in the end, we have to make the call based upon the discussions we hear on what the value of gaining that is or losing it is. And that's, and that's why we give them a couple.
Friday is after we're done with the hearings, that's Thursday. Friday, we have the luxury of saying, I wanna see the assessor, DHS, whatever, back here. We can even bring them together and say, guys, we need to work this out.
We have to bring them together, we're not gonna get, that's where we're trying to get the team to buy it.
It's the callbacks.
Well, yeah, and I guess that's what I was speaking to, is it's gonna be one-on-one.
Right, everybody has their time slots. So I guess if I had a big project I wanted and Shannon came after me and I thought that the car would probably take precedence over mine, I would stay here and say, excuse me, so that I could interrupt his. And I don't know if that would be fun, if people were interrupting you while you were trying to do yours.
I don't think you'd ever, I mean, you'd never get done, it takes, it takes me three hours to get through it.
You need to understand the budget, we have to understand it, we can't, that has to occur. It's just unfortunate we haven't got time to say, okay, now here's where the cut lines are with everybody and then have that integrated discussion.
I mean, I think it's good to have lots of questions and have that dialogue, I'm not against that because I think that way you have a, you have to have a better argument or at least reasoning by what, why you asked for something. That's, that's not, it's just.
Because in the past, and it happened, this is not a hammer on anybody, people pad the budget knowing they're gonna take a cut, that's just reality, not padding it in a bad way, just meaning, I need these kinds of things. And they know they're gonna give up some things and they're ready to do that. Is that an Amber Alert, did you, are you missing?
No, that's supposed to be a twelve-something, so what the heck?
That could be eastern time, a twelve.
No, it's two eighteen eastern, eleven eighteen here.
No, no, sorry.
It was good. What was that?
Yeah, I mean, we're actually probably going to have to be that liaison between one department and another after we hear them all, that's the problem, you can't really assume that role until you've heard every hearing.
That's what this Friday is for, once we've heard it all and they're giving individual reports to us, then Friday, we could bring in multiples and say, here's where we stay.
Right, because we'll know by then what they've got to have and we'll know what they'll lose if we, if they take the seven percent, ten percent, twelve percent hit. And then we're gonna balance that against each department and then we're gonna have to bring them in.
Okay. So.
It's a process.
Well, and maybe then too, we'll find more revenue, as we're discussing this, that someone would have more revenue, which would.
That's the value of putting them, making them really look at, fine tune the budget that they've asked for instead of us.
Absolutely.
Can I ask, so you're gonna send this email out to the department heads and they're gonna kind of take a look and do, maybe do some revisions, but you won't have a new document?
No. There's one preliminary and one final.
They have their bins, they know what they want.
Okay, I just want, I just wanted to make sure I don't wanna print one and then have to print one.
No, this won't get revised based on that email or based on.
It will after the discussion, we have to make cuts.
Right, I sat through all of it last year, so.
You did, the only trip without sat through every single day.
I'm sorry.
That old paint drying thing.
Well, thank you, it's a lot of work for all.
Shall I have a question? You've been here quite a while, have you ever presented a budget where the revenue exceeded the ones?
In a perfect world.
Just curious.
Or a fairy tale.
Yeah, it just, but it's human nature to want more things for your departments or for your staff.
Sure, you wanna improve, you got your vision, you got your own department's growth you want.
I would miss if they didn't. Here's what I need to make my department do the very best I can. So I was just curious if you have had a surplus budget.
But twenty-seventeen, I think we ended up being four thousand nine hundred to the good.
After.
After every, twenty-seventeen.
After executing.
Yep, after the whole thing was done, and it was painful to get to that number. But that was as far back as I looked.
Well.
I'm excited.
We've got a long weekend ahead of us, they got a long weekend ahead of them. We'll get that email out and make a cooperative effort, we'll do the best we can.
But since you hadn't heard, do you think it's more fun that they would let you pick first and kind of see what you had in mind or just? But yours is one that you just really didn't do anything different, honestly.
I didn't, mine was almost exactly like it was this year.
But let's say that you still had to cut forty thousand dollars out of it. I mean, obviously, you'd rather be able to say what forty thousand you're gonna cut out of it than these three Commissioners, correct?
That's the whole point, you hit it right on the head, Tom.
Yeah. If you told me to cut forty thousand, I'd have to close my door.
Alright, fifty dollars and ten cents, you'll know what to cut. Budgets are what they are.
I'm writing that down right now.
Hey, I really like that idea.
We wouldn't be the first company that had to do that.
Guys, guess what, it could happen, the revenues aren't there, somebody loses a job sometimes.
And we've had that, we've had, we've more, more times than I would like to think about.
You can only execute with what money you have.
That people.
Further questions for Mrs. Hobbit?
No, thank you for a wonderful job.
Thank you, a lot of work, appreciate it.
Good luck.
Donna.
I get to see a lot of you in the next few weeks.
I don't have to get in trouble again.
I have one thing I'd like to add.
Okay, go ahead, sir.
The, there's a movement afoot between Silver Cliff, West Cliff, the Hager folks and Cindy Howard, property-wise, to do a concerted, I always wanna call them gophers, but they're not, prairie dog eradication. And the question was, if we don't all do it at once, then it's gonna be not worthwhile.
That's a good thing.
So I just wanna let you know where this is going and I'm gonna ask Brenda to put this on the agenda. The town of West Cliff got a bid and it included their share, included our newly acquired Hager property. So Mike Carter, the town man at West Cliff that I were talking about since, and he would like the county to be part of this group of all the concerns, including the two towns. So I was gonna ask him to come to the board meeting, probably a wetmore because I think they'd like to get this done pretty soon. And it's the agricultural department that's gonna do it. Apparently, they've put a pill down the hole, it doesn't harm other, he can explain it better than I can, but ecologically, it's not terrible other than to the groundhogs. So I just was gonna mention it to you, just kind of a heads up, it's not a huge amount of money we would have to pay if we chose to do it, but I did wanna get him on the agenda. So I'll mention it, but I just wanted to give you a heads up on this discussion we had.
Would you talk with Mr. Carter, if you'd be able to come down to one of them?
I asked him and he said he would do whatever needed to do to cut this stuff. The wetmore, it was usually the lighter one, I was thinking.
Yeah, prairie dogs.
Yeah, prairie dogs eradicated, it's a concerted effort from multiple groups. But if a fox eats a prairie dog, it's not gonna kill a fox, I mean, one that's been poisoned, or is it gonna? Well, that's what they were claiming, he can explain it better, but that was the question that we had, what else does it kill besides prairie dog? And according to Mike, nothing. It just goes down the hole, the gases kills them, it's almost, no, it's not, it's not a long time.
Alright, we'll move on, unfinished item, or unfinished business, gentlemen? I have none. Good, thank you, appreciate it. Brenda?
Yes.
Could you add an agenda item on the wetmore? Agenda, please. Pest eradication on county-owned property.
They be ready by then? They got any support?
I could kind of give you an update, the West Cliff share was two thousand dollars, including the Hager property. The question was asked at the town meeting last night, can we, fifty bucks in the county. Well, if the county's over their share, how much would it be? So I suggested nineteen fifty for the town, fifty for the county, they yelled at me and then.
That was a good first.
They're thinking maybe fifty fifty, they don't really know.
Fifty fifty, we don't have fifty percent of those groundhogs on seven acres, we're not talking about a lot of money.
So on the twenty-fourth, new business, thank you. Okay. First item of business, new business, share of contract with both the towns, are you prepared to deal with that? Okay, so the town of West Cliff.
Silver Cliff is the only one I have.
Oh, Silver Cliff. Oh, you do? Because I've got West Cliff. I've got West Cliff.
Yeah, but it's been changed and they haven't approved it now because as you probably recall, when I came last time, you said to, yeah, but that's, that's the one that you decided not to approve because it didn't have any increase over last year, right? So you wanted me to go back to the, to the two towns to see about an increase. So Silver Cliff agreed to a ten percent increase, which was a, I'd have to, it'll go from twelve hundred, or I'm sorry, twelve thousand dollars a year to thirteen, seven fifty a year, which is a ten percent increase. The town of West Cliff has not approved one yet, we talked about it, I met with Kathy Rice and Mike Carter. We preliminary spoke of a ten percent increase, but then I was at the town meeting last night thinking that that was gonna go through, but.
Did they talk about it?
I'm sorry?
Did they talk about it?
They did, so they said that they would like to know what my budget increase is gonna be for twenty-nineteen. If I'm gonna have a six percent increase, then they would think, then they should pay a six percent increase as well. That it should, which quite frankly, I do, I can't disagree with that logic from the standpoint that.
If you were to.
If it's an, I mean, but how do you, how do you defend a ten percent increase if then in fact your budget's only really going up six percent increase, why does that fee go up? And that's, that's the problem that quite frankly has been lingering for a decade.
That's erroneous logic, that's not logical. Because the fact is, they have more requirement for you to patrol in town.
But the county has never established that.
But that's not the county's job, that's their job. What is the, what is, what, what, what do you do for the town? How many ti, how many hours do deputies patrol?
I don't disagree with that.
And if they have more people and more crime in the city, you're gonna spend more time because there's people, right?
I agree.
The county has the same issues, you know, you've got issues, more pot farms, more blah, blah, blah. We don't know what the cost is because we're going through that process now. But if West Cliff didn't exist, we would just do it in a, you know, like it is. We have to share some time of your time to go let them, you know, hire you to do that. They need to pay if it's gonna be an increase of work for you guys in town. They can't look at, well, you know, the county sees more business out here, so therefore we should pay more in town. That just doesn't make any logical sense.
So now that you've said all of that, but your logic.
I know that's what they think, that's okay.
But your logic right there, from what you just said right there, means that if I go into a store to buy a candy bar, I should establish what I pay for it, not the person selling it. We're selling, we're selling the service, the town's purchasing that service.
Right.
And that's what I was trying to say is, is that for decades now, the county has not established some type of baseline that says, listen, because look, I'll be the first, and I've said it already, I've said it in the town meeting, said the last night, I've said it here. The town of West Cliff, and I'm only using West Cliff because that's where the discussion is, we could talk about Silver Cliff too, but the town of West Cliff essentially uses, uses between, on average, thirty-three to thirty-five percent of our resources. They don't pay thirty-five percent of the budget for cost on that. Now, if we wanted to do that, we would bankrupt West Cliff, there's no way they could afford to pay that.
But let's assume, let's say they get to a point where they get a lot of, an economic boom and they hire their own police force, you know, the town marshal and whatever, to patrol the streets themselves. That would free up your thirty-five percent that you're spending and we would be spending it on the county.
Right.
Right? And your budget would be different, might even be decreased from a county.
But we're the ones that set that price, not West Cliff.
Right, that's right.
Right.
That's right.
And that's, and that's my point is, is we, it's never been, it's, there's never been a baseline set. See, I think that to be reasonable, you can't arbitrarily go, well, this year it's gonna be a three percent increase, next year it's six, then it's twelve, it's ten. We need to set a baseline and then, and it hasn't been done because I think, quite frankly, it's a, that's a.
Well, if you're taking thirty-five percent, that's a big deal to us. I mean, I didn't realize, if you're, if we're spending thirty-five percent of your time over there and you're not getting.
Typically, on average, West Cliff is thirty-three to thirty-five percent. Well, West Cliff is, or I'm sorry, Silver Cliff is ten to twelve percent, and then the county is around fifty-five percent.
See, there you go.
Roughly. And for the mathematicians out there, I know that percentage didn't equal a hundred percent. But it's, well, so, so understand, right? So as the county sheriff, you are obligated by statute to perform certain duties, whether you're.
That's right.
Well, reimbursed or not. Now, the town of West Cliff, by statute, is required to provide law enforcement services to the folks within the town of West Cliff. But that, but when people start thinking about law enforcement services, they don't understand that statutorily, that's very different than what they think it is. They think it means traffic enforcement, it's not.
It's not.
They think that you have to walk around and make sure people are obeying, you know, ordinances.
Right.
It's not really, that's not really the case, what it is, is public safety. You have to make sure, you know, if there's an assault or something, you go down there, you keep the peace, you make sure people are safe. Other than that, by law, you're not really obligated to do much more than that. So if we say, listen, West Cliff, you guys start paying fifty thousand dollars a year. And they said, we're not paying that, we can't force them to pay it, and in turn.
No, but you don't have to enforce their crosswalk.
And, yeah, there's a lot of different services. I mean, I think, I think we're splitting hairs when it comes down to it, I think we're on the same page there. Alyssa, I, I think it's more than reasonable that, that ultimately, we have to get to a point where the towns are at least together, they're paying for at least one full-time employee. I think we have to get to there at some point, but listen, our budget is tight, their budget's tight too. I understand that and that's a, that's a difficult, it's a difficult.
Every municipality has, marries their municipal police. Every municipality has, marries their municipal police work with the sheriff's office. That's a fact, just like you, you've mentioned.
What do you mean?
You know, you know, sheriffs have jurisdiction, just like you said, by law...
They work together.
Right.
But in, in a municipality that has their own police force, sheriff's office doesn't really do much in the cities. Because they have their county resources, I mean, to take care of. But then the municipalities also pay for jail services, cause when they arrest someone, take them to jail, it costs them money.
Right. So, we do have an issue.
Well, I'm walking a fine line here as the town attorney for West Cliff and a commissioner. So, it's very difficult for me to really weigh in on where I stand, other than I absolutely agree with the comments from both of you that the towns both need to pay a realistic share of sheriff's services. Recognize that the sheriff must provide services, whether you pay him or not. The impression I got last night from West Cliff was that they are definitely willing to increase what we had previously. And if I'm not mistaken, they asked you to tell them, well, what is it you really want?
Right, and I will.
And I, I certainly am not a trustee in there and I'm just, from listening, the impression I got was, if you said, I think 10%, like Silver Cliff did, I suspect they would probably...
I agree.
Look at that favorably.
I agree.
So, I mean, I don't...
I just don't wanna put words in their mouth yet because...
And that's what I'm trying not to do and I don't, I'm trying not to usurp my...
No, I understand. Yeah, you're, you're in a tough...
Kind of unique situation and, but, you know, it's not...
So, I'll speak, I'll speak and then you correct me if you disagree with this. So, I believe that if, that if I write out a full proposal and say, I think a, a 10% increase is what... And I had, I had mistakenly thought that that was basically what we agreed upon when I met with Ms. Rice and Mr. Carter and all that, but somehow that didn't work out. So, I believe if I go back with a written proposal and I show the figures and say, listen, 10% increase, that they will, they will vote for it and I won't get any grief on it.
Well, I think just what you just said...
But the comment was that, hey, how, what is, what's the increase over your budget? And I told them, I said, I won't really know until later this month.
That's an unfair thing. I think better argument for them to understand is what you just said. You're spending half of your time on two towns.
Right.
And we're paying the lion's share, the county is.
Right.
That's all you need to say. And let them have their conscience, guide them, until we can get to the point where they're big enough to handle a lot of their own law enforcement on these other i-issues, but...
I mean, listen, I could probably write a proposal up and easily give all the data and the facts that would support going to 65 or 70,000 dollars a year. I could easily do that.
Sure, but they can't afford it.
But I also know and understand that it's not realistic for them to be able, and so I would never do that.
I would personally feel that tying how much more money the towns pay to you based on your budget increase is really not appropriate.
That's right.
Unless they're paying 35% of your total budget.
Already. Then that's a different, that's a different answer.
And that's, and that's a great point.
Then it would be appropriate. Since you're subsidized anyway, the question is, you'll be subsidizing slightly less if they give you, let's say you get a 5% raise, just 5% increase, and they agreed to a 10%. So, their subsidy is slightly smaller. It's not a one-for-one agreement.
That's a, that's a really...
That's a better way of looking at it, that's how, that's how I was thinking.
Good point, okay. So, we're all on the same page there, right?
I know.
I think we really are. And the town's on the same page too.
Both towns and the county, I think, all understand that we wanted the right thing. There's nothing adversarial, so when it comes down to a vote, I will probably vote unless there's an adversarial issue that I'll abstain.
Sure.
So...
No, I, I, I think if the town could pay $100,000, if they could afford it, they would. With that, I, I mean, I think they, they wouldn't...
Realize value.
If we could justify that that was the, the percentage wise, so, yeah, it's not adversarial.
Especially if you told them about the mock traffic code last night and you don't wanna bring that up, do you?
No, not really.
Yeah, my thoughts were very much in line with the other commissioners. Number one, as I understand the process, what your budget is, has nothing to do with what this county feels we need to be charging the towns. To me, those are two separate entities.
I concur with that slightly.
You're right.
And obviously, with respect to what you said, if they were, if they were truly spending 35% or paying for 35% of your entire budget, that's different. Obviously, we know they're not. So, to me, it's just an invalid approach to say, well, what's your budget and then we'll decide what we're gonna do. I don't wanna become adversarial either.
That's right.
No, no.
But certainly, the county's biting off the lion's share of law enforcement. There's no question of that.
Someday, they'll be weaned maybe.
I thought as a commission...
Well, at some point, it'll get so big, it has to.
Yeah.
I thought as a commission, we did basically say we felt 10% was a reasonable...
No, there was no number discussed.
It wasn't.
No, you, you told me to go back and see what numbers I could put together. So, and, and so, again, we had discussed 10% with both towns. And so, I, I have the Silver Cliff contract here that they did agree to a 10% increase for your review and signatures.
That's nice that you need to be proacting, Ross.
Well, they, and they pay, they pay, you know, significantly less than the town of West Cliff because their resources and, you know, the, the amount, the percentage of resources on my end that they use is smaller.
What did that translate into dollars?
13,000, is that how?
Oh, for, for the town, 3,300.
1,050 or something?
3,300 for, for West Cliff, yes. 3,300. They paid 33,000 currently.
Okay, I gotcha.
And so, 3,300.
What was Silver Cliff's increase then?
Uh, 1,200 and...
1,200 bucks?
50 dollars at that.
Okay.
Cause they were paying 12,500 now.
Okay.
So, it goes up...
To 13,750.
To 13,750, yeah.
With that being said, I would move then that we approve the contract with Silver Cliff.
I'll second that, it's...
At 13,750 dollars between the Crest County Sheriff's Department and the town of Silver Cliff. The movement seconded to approve the contract, 13,750 dollars between sheriff and the town of Silver Cliff. Further discussion, or is there any discussion?
Just a point, I know we did, we talked about it before, but just so that it's on the record. So, so that contract has essentially no changes on it, other than the dates and the fee. It's the same services that we've provided in years past, just...
Thank you.
The only comment I would make, if I may, Mr. Chair, is that with the tax base in Silver Cliff, I suspect I have nothing more, it's just supposition. With the $2 stores, I believe their tax base probably has increased some. Maybe being more active, paying a higher percentage based on the services provided next year would be something to consider.
Correct.
Just a thought.
I do know in our, in our budget talks, I, I spoke with them, so I think they are gonna see it a little bit. But what really hurt them was with Critical Path closing.
Yeah, that was a...
Critical, that was a huge hit to them and they're, they're, they were actually discussing that they're, and I don't know if they've really talked about it publicly, but doing some different things with their roads and getting rid of asphalt.
Correct.
Maybe, maybe for some chip seal or something, but they're, they're really trying to scrounge for what they're gonna do, so they're not, they're not...
They're trying to balance their budget, so...
I was just throwing that out, thinking...
Critical Path killed them.
No issue.
And I know you're not advocating this, but it does bring up that philosophical question about, do we charge what we think they can afford? Or do we charge them based on what we think the services are worth?
I would like to see it charged based upon a percentage of their revenue. 8% of my budget, 20, whatever the number is, 20% of my budget being Silver Cliff or West Cliff is earmarked strictly for the sheriff. And then we don't have to worry about, oh, we can increase 1,000, 2,000. No, it's what my tax base is gonna be that year, X amount's going to sheriff, just straight out like that. And that way, we know as their revenues rise and fall...
That's sort of a starting point.
The money that you would receive from the two entities.
But you could see, that's a good point and I think that's valid. But you could see a case where you lose a business and you got more people there creating more problems and so there's, you know, workload is gonna shift.
That's right.
I understand, but they have to be...
But that's a good starting point.
At least for the foreseeable future, next 200 years, the county will have to subsidize the sheriff. We're not gonna, the county will not pay 55% and the two towns are not gonna pay 45%. It just can't happen.
That's correct, yeah.
So, doing it on a percentage of your budget, as opposed to just negotiating each year, seems to me a fair and equitable way to do this.
And, and I mean, let's, let's, let's not kid ourselves, we're, we're subsidizing on many levels, even with dispatch services. And we've talked about this, right? We're dispatching for all of these entities and we're not, they don't really pay much in. And so, it's, it's much bigger than just the town contracts.
Public comment?
Well, I, just as a devil's advocate sort of thing, you know, the, you guys are responsible to the county citizens, not to the citizens of West Cliff and Silver Cliff. And if the citizens feel like their resources are going to the towns, for whatever reason, that could be an issue. You know, I mean, I realize that with law enforcement, you know, depending on where you stop them, whether it's in town or out, you know, but, but subsidizing a lot with our money...
And then taking a hit in the county, not a good thing.
Right, and so now we're over budget and...
Yeah, points well taken.
Well, and I'll let you vote and then I'll bring something.
Yeah, further discussion on the contract with Silver Cliff. Any further public comment? Hearing none, we will proceed to vote. All in favor of approving the contract with Silver Cliff, 13,750 dollars? Say aye.
Aye.
Posnay, motion carries?
I just did, I did wanna bring up, so as we go into budget hearings next week, and I'll bring it up there, whatever, but... So, the towns are, they asked me to, they asked me about revenue streams, if there's any way that they could recoup some of the, the money from the tickets, you know, traffic infractions that are written in the towns. And so, model traffic code does allow that to, to occur. Currently, right now, basically, any traffic infractions in the, in the county, whether it's in the towns or the county, all that goes into county general with a few, you know, the state taking a little bit of a small amount. So, but, but the towns do have that avenue and they're, we're gonna work with them. They're going to do some research as to the possibility of doing that. If so, I would expect that about 40% of the, the traffic infraction revenues, if that all came to fruition, would come out of the county and, and go to the towns.
Any idea what, how much money that means?
I would have to go back and, I mean, just, just shooting from the hip a little bit. A yearly, I would say, would probably be about, if the number stayed the same as, right, which we're expecting about $100,000 this year, it'll be a little less than 100, but it's gonna be close, which is beyond my...
40,000 would come out of county general going into the towns?
Maybe a little more. So, well, in the third quarter, we, we made 600, how, how it wound up being exactly 600 is beyond me, but it's 600 traffic stops during the third quarter, from 1st of July to the 30th of September. 211 of those traffic stops were in, in West Cliff. So, you're, you're talking 30% of the revenue right there, so...
And would the county have anything to say, whether that happens or not? Or is that some statute?
Oh, I mean, you could, you could, you as the commissioner could ask a meeting with the towns and say, hey, listen, let's sit down. But, you know, and the, the comment was made last night, look, so if you take revenue from the county for this, then you can expect that the county's gonna want revenue back because you're using county resources to generate the revenue. I mean, it's right, so we start moving this shell game around, what does it look like?
The whole key is, you gotta go back to this, this subsidization. As long as the counties are subsidizing the towns...
We have the right to keep it.
And that's where I'm going. The bottom line is...
I don't disagree.
It, I mean, if we wanna write you a 40,000, hang on a second, if we wanna write you a 40,000 just because we're really nice, because of that, we're gonna subsidize you that much less. Would be the supposition I would make that the commissioner would say. If it was a true world where they pay their actual cost, then there's a boom and a windfall for them, but it's not the case. So, your comment last night, I said to myself, right on, because it's just not gonna happen. I mean, you may get the money, but it, trust me, the subsidiz, the subsidize...
Right.
That we do...
And my plan is, is when we start to go to these meetings, I'm just gonna, I'm gonna have all the numbers. And we're gonna talk about, this is my overall budget. And if you're using 35%, this is what should reasonably would be being paid. Now, you're paying this, if you wanna take this, if you wanna realize an extra $20,000...
Used car thing.
Start paying your share.
I'm just gonna show all the numbers and say, now...
Take the balloon, you squeeze it here, you squeeze it here, bottom line is still a one...
Until they equalize and we get there, they're carrying their own weight. They can have, that's their revenue, it should be.
Right.
But my question stands, does the county commission have any say-so of whether that would occur?
No, you do not. Because by law, they, they're allowed to do that if they choose. Where you, where your control comes in is, is that this, this contract says, so you have to pay this amount of money.
So, we're gonna charge them more.
That's where you, that's where you're...
We're gonna quit doing stop traffic stops and down.
Oh, gosh, yeah.
Back to the good old days, we had one sheriff and one town marshal.
That's the unintended consequence of that sort of thing.
That's right. Because that's ultimately what happens when funding starts to go down, well, then services have to be reduced. They just have to.
Absolutely.
That's right.
So, I would move we strike from the agenda, then the contract with the town of West Cliff. Actually, we could postpone that, we wouldn't have to strike it. So, let's have that conversation first, I'll withdraw my motion. So, moving forward then, when would you expect us to have a contract from the town of West Cliff?
Well, they don't have another town meeting now, you know, for a month, so I don't think they could...
Yeah, I, I'm sorry.
No, you go ahead.
I was gonna suggest that something like this, I think they could have a special meeting with this one item on it, if, if it's imperative to do sooner. And it will be, because it's gonna impact your budget.
Got it.
So, I think, I think the town should, and I'm just speaking as a commissioner here, should have a special meeting so that we know where their number's gonna be, so that we can do our budget properly.
Well, my plan was, is to have the proposal to the town today, barring any, you know, any catastrophe. I'll, I will go back, I will, I'll sit down, it'll take me an hour or so to get that, and I'll propose it to them. And I'll, and I'll tell them, listen, I have budget hearings to start on the 9th, and I really need to have an answer on this. We'll see, and we'll see what they can do. I, I can't speak for the town, of course. Right. But, but my goal will be that at least by the 9th, I'll walk in here with a preliminary idea.
And this contract, the one we'd looked at previously, was set to be entered into on the 6th of November. Silver Cliff was the 15th of October for you to start providing services, according to that contract.
Yeah. But I...
Do we need to...
It's effective October, but it, it's for services from 1 January to December 31. And there's three of those, there was three of those. They were asking so that you could, if you could sign all three of them and then that way, there's one for the commission, one for the town and one for me.
Yeah.
So, there is one.
If you wanna sign and Shannon, then I'll sign and put my...
Yes, ma'am.
So, Kelly, I missed it, was there actually a vote on this one?
Uh, yes.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
No, I got that trail dusted, isn't it?
What, uh, we need to get this on another agenda. We can handle it at the wetmore meeting on the 24th.
I will let Ms. Gady know as soon as I hear anything, if that's acceptable.
Okay.
You don't control her, you don't know.
And then we can put it on whatever appropriate agenda as soon as possible, don't you think?
Yes. As soon as I hear from them, we'll get it on the, the next possible agenda, if that's acceptable.
So, these go away?
Yes, sir.
Alright. Anything else pertaining to...
So, I just wanted to bring up two things, you kind of hit on it with Vern when he was in here. IT, I just wanna extend a big thank you to, to Vern. He worked really hard with our new 911 system install and the phone system install. We're still experiencing a few little issues with our new phone system, which I guess they had similar issues over here with the new phone system, just working through some bugs and, and some programming issues as well as, they're not sure if it's some older... they're not sure if it's some older equipment through censorship, but, but it's getting, it's getting ironed out. But the, the transition went pretty smooth considering it was a complete replacement of all the nine-one-one systems. So it is up and running, working pretty darn well. All the dispatchers really like it. It's very interactive and user-friendly, instinctive, so it's good. Still have a little bit of cleanup to do in the control room over there. They've got to pull out some old equipment. Vern, yes, quarterbacking that, and so, but I just want to, you know, extend a thank you so that you guys know Vern's really did a great job getting all that set up and coordinating that, so I want to bring that up. I also wanted to.
Did you get new monitors too, or no?
A couple new monitors, not all. Each, you know, each, each post, each post has five monitors, you know, the big one for the mapping and then the, the four standard size, so I believe there was one new monitor with each of those, but we have some in the budget for next year. Well, maybe today it is, but it may not be at this time next week. Also wanted to just let you guys know that Ed, our maintenance man, has done a really big job getting some projects done over the sheriff's office. Finally got that very, you know, dilapidated soffit and fascias all repaired. It's painted. The back of the building where the paint was really, really poor condition, it's been painted. The front of the building, the stucco needed repaired, it's been repaired and painted. And then he did all the front trim around the front door and all that as well. He's plugging up a couple holes up in the upper level where all of our radio communication wiring goes into the building. That was just when the folks did that, they left it open, so he's gonna take care of that too. So he's done a lot of stuff and he's had a lot of help from our trustees as well, but just want to let you guys know, he did a big job on that too.
Well, thanks for letting those trustees help him too. I've been with both of those guys. They seemed like they were appreciative of the opportunity to help and I think they worked well with Ed and, yeah, they seemed like nice guys. Given the circumstances, you know.
Right, right.
Yeah, it looks good, I thought. I mean, eye appeal coming to the front of sheriff's office, looks a lot better than it did a couple weeks ago.
It sure does, yeah. So that's, that was some good maintenance that was done to help prolong, you know, the life of that building, so it was good. Then I just also wanted to give you a quick update on, so that marijuana grow, we're gonna do, the press release is set on my desk. I have to just approve it and it'll go out. So we, we did a bust on Americana Grove, right off Airport Road. You, we've all lived here a while, so you're familiar. It's the same residence that we did the bust in twenty fifteen. The big bust, we, I said a hundred and seventy-five plants earlier, but I had my numbers mixed up. So we had a hundred and twenty-five plants, only about twenty-four, twenty-five of those were mature plants. The rest were all in various stages, from some nursery up to, you know, about three, three to four foot plants, but I've made two arrests. And there was, there was a kiddo that was at the school that also lives out there, eleven years old, I believe, young kiddo that lives there as well, so I wanted to extend my thanks to, so Jackie Hobby came out. She rendered the, the property uninhabitable. So a big thank you to her for coming out. Also Roden Bridge, Gary Hyde was out there. It was seven or eight, I don't remember what. We were there till after eight last night. There were twelve of, twelve of my folks between sheriff's office and posse folks that were disassembling everything. It's pretty lengthy. We, we started at two and finished a little after eight last night. Also had a lot of help from the fire department. They were out there for a bit, and then John Rafferty and Chase Carlin from the fire department stayed until we were done. They helped us disassemble a bunch of stuff, and so big thank you to those guys as well.
All electronics came off, came down?
We took, we took most of it. We didn't get into removing all the wiring because that, we'd have probably been there another two hours and it was dark, you know, and we have all the power off, so we're on flashlights and headlamps and stuff, so.
But all the hard components?
Yeah, all the hardy, all the, all the ballasts, all the bulbs, all the fixtures came down.
Now, as part of clarification, the, the eleven-year-old was not at the scene. He was in school.
No, so we did, so the female party's seven months pregnant, and so she, she came out and then, you know, there was, so, so we did have DHS involved also, I was gonna mention, so Stacy Shaw came out. But this, we knew that they, we knew what the activity was there. We just didn't know what the status of the plants were yet. And we got a welfare check on Monday. The school called and wanted us to go check because the kiddo hadn't been in school for, for some time, and so when we went down, that's when we were able to determine that it was time to, to go ahead and move on that, so that's what prompted us to do it yesterday instead of, we, we were thinking a little bit later in this month is when we were gonna go in, but regardless, same owner, the Cuban owner. This is the same property that the feds had initially told us they were going to seize the property. Well, that, you know, they said up to three years it takes. Well, obviously that hasn't happened yet, so I'm gonna talk to Mr. Smith and we'll see if maybe we as the county can't, can't work on that. It's a little more challenging now. The federal legislature's passed a lot of laws and state legislature on seizing properties, but we'll see what we can do. We'll, we'll investigate some avenues and all.
So the status of the juvenile.
Exactly the question I was gonna ask in the same words.
So he's, so DHS, DHS has him, he was placed with a foster home for the, for the evening because his mom is out of pocket.
Got it. In your back pocket.
I did not. Transported.
Transported.
Female patient.
Yeah, she, she was taken to St. Thomas More for medical clearance because she's pregnant, and then she was going to Fremont County jail.
And.
We did also find some cocaine. The male party had some cocaine in his wallet as well, so. He's residing in our.
Did that tip follow you, you know, we had or?
Oh, it was cocaine. Yeah.
And it's, talk to us just for a minute about the animals.
Oh, yeah, so we had the, so they had two pitbull, two male pitbulls there. They're, they're, they're caged. So the grow, there was, there was a one room that was growing in the basement of the home. It's a two-story modular. So there was one grow that had about, I want to say forty plants roughly, smaller plants. That was obviously in the nursery that they had going on there. But then they have a steel building that's not attached where the rest of the grow was, and they have a small kennel off the front of the, of that, that these two pitbulls were in. And we knew the pitbulls were loose earlier in the day. We were a little concerned about them because you just don't know. Come to find out, these two dogs were very loving, really nice dogs. I, I petted them. They, they were friendly, so we reached out to our animal advocacy group who said that they couldn't transport them, but fortunately we got a guy from Fremont County that came up and, and took possession of them and, and took them to the shelter in Canyon City. You know, luckily, and I was really happy that the dogs were friendly and we weren't forced to, you know, have to defend ourselves and, and, you know, one of them get hurt, but it worked out well. And, you know, now we've got a, you know, you always talk about costs incurred, right? So now we're incurring costs because we have to pay to, to keep those dogs there until we can find out what's gonna happen with the, the two individuals that were taken into custody. We can't just put those dogs up for adoption right away. They would be quickly adopted. They are very beautiful, well taken care of. They were not neglected. You could tell that the families cared for the dogs, so we've got it, that, you know, that cost incurred.
So it's just one family, it's just one entity?
No, no. So they're not married, or at least not officially married, the couple that was there, although they somehow belong to each other for sure, you know, they don't admit necessarily, but she had a tattoo of his name on her arm, so I'm hoping that at least that they are, and I, and I just, you know, without any sarcasm. But, but there are several other people associated with, with that, well, it's difficult to tie who, who is and isn't because they don't speak English, or at least they say they don't speak English. Whether that's the case or not could be debated, but that we know that there's at least two more people tied to that residence that come and go, and we've seen them there and contacted them there. But again, you know, it's, whose marijuana is it? And everybody does this, so you don't really, you, you know, but you can't prove. That's, that's the shell game, and that's, that's how this, that's how this, for lack of a better term, this game's played.
Well, I happened to go on this thing yesterday. I asked Sheriff Barney if I could do a ride along. He consented to that. I was very, it was my first one, so I didn't know what to expect. But I was very impressed with the professionalism, the pre-planning, the carrying out of this drug bust. I felt like sheriff's department was prepared for the worst. I don't think you necessarily expected the worst, but I was, it printed on me that you were prepared. If something were gonna go south, I had certainly had my instructions of what I was gonna be able to do and not do and when that would happen. And I just, all of our deputy sheriffs, posse, I mean, they were on point. There wasn't any screwing around. This was a professional, serious operation that had obviously a lot of forethought gone into it. So I want to commend you and the under sheriff both for that whole, I mean, I'm sure all of them go that way. I've just never witnessed it, so. It was, it was impressive. And I wished every law-abiding citizen in our county could have been there and observed it and then saw what I saw so that we would have a grasp as a community on the impact and what is going on here. I think we have a lot of people stick their head in the sand, probably including me, because I'm not privy to that. I don't know that. I didn't know what a grow would look like. I didn't know how complicated, complex and, and technologically advanced the marijuana-growing industry is in our county. That was the wake-up call for me, was that it's not happening in Florida and Georgia. It's happening right here.
So everywhere.
And, so anyway, I was just impressed.
I also just wanted, so Sergeant Bonavita's from Carter State Patrol was there too. He did perimeter security for us. We, we tried to invite State Patrol, and we have a really good relationship with them as well, and, and they were able to. Captain Smith was, had planned to do it himself, but then got hung up in a meeting, so he sent Serge up. And then also EMS was there as well. They, actually, we ended up having to have two deputies transported down just to get a medical clearance. And did they go to St. Thomas More or did they go to Parkview?
Park, uh, Park Center West, the, yeah, Parkview Care.
They just got, we were a little worried, maybe they got some carbon monoxide poisoning or something. They were just, weren't feeling very good. None of us were feeling very good, but that's what happens when you spend several hours in a grow, inhaling that marijuana stuff. Used to be exposed to it, so I know, I, I can feel the, the remnants from yesterday still.
I was impacted clearly, I mean, just for a little bit I was there. So a couple concerns I had right off the bat. And I did it with Sheriff Barney a little about this, but it has to do with those dogs. And, and that's one portion of the whole idea of the expense this county went through yesterday and will continue to go through and probably not get a dime back from.
Maybe we will.
Maybe.
So there is, and, and we've got money this past year, so it's, the governor did sign a bill and they, and, and actually Chris is the one that processes all this under Sheriff Bar, and that is, it's the gray-black, or it's actually called black and gray marijuana fund. And so if we can show costs incurred from, from mitigating illegal marijuana grows, we can apply for reimbursement on that. And this year we got how much back, Chris? About eight?
Yeah, about eight thousand.
So, so we do, we'll take all these costs and we put it together and, you know, we, we apply for it. Sometimes you get it. So far, we haven't been told no. So, so, so we'll try. We'll try to get some of it back, you know, but I had, I had five people in overtime yesterday, and it was, you know, we started at one-thirty and I have no idea what time a couple of those guys got in last night. Like, I left a little after eight to go home, and there was a couple deputies that were there long after that.
The other thing I was thinking about, obviously those deputies were in Tyvek suits. I wonder about some kind of aspirators, some respirators, some kind of breathing apparatus, man. I don't know, it's, I'm in over my head even bringing it up, but for, for the ten or fifteen minutes that I was in that building, eight o'clock last night, I could still feel the effects of it.
Yeah. So we'll do a little bit better job of ventilating any of those a little bit earlier. I mean, we did it yesterday, but the way it worked out, we tried to get a jumpstart on it. I, I mean, I'll take the blame because I was like, listen, guys, we gotta get going because we're gonna be here all night, and so, and we should have waited an extra twenty minutes and got all the ventilation in place to, to move that air out of there, and then we'd have been okay. I mean, we got in there and did carbon monoxide testing and made sure that, you know, with the sniffers from the, from fire department and, and everything was okay, but that prolonged exposure, and so I, I take the hit on that. That was my fault. I should have. I was trying to, I was trying to get the process going instead of, so we'll, we'll fix that in the, and that won't, that won't happen again. At least, you know, unless it's uncontrollable.
I would guess, Sheriff Barney talked about those mature plants. I would guess the actual square foot of one of those plants would probably take up this corner.
Yeah, oh, yeah, they're big. They're, they're about that big around.
They're huge and probably six feet tall.
Yeah, yeah, they were about six feet tall.
Five and a half, six feet.
Yeah.
I was just amazed.
Off the floor, you know, the pot, the pots and the two, but, yeah, they're good. I mean, the plant itself, from, from the ground up, it's good five feet. Had some nice long buds on some of them, like that, you know, six, seven inches.
By nice long buds, you mean the kind of plants you'd like to attack late in their production cycle?
Absolutely. Those are the ones you like to seize, the little bitty ones.
I thought that was interesting.
Because it takes, costs a lot of money to grow them that big, so when you cut that circuit down, it hurts their pocketbook. You know, the little bitty ones, they haven't spent much money to those dudes.
Which I would have never thought about that.
I mean, we, we were seeing peak electrical use at that place at thirty, thirty-three thousand kilowatts for a month, in, in a month. Average home use is less than four. So that's a big expense. And then we take all that equipment too, and that hits them in the pocketbook.
Probably about five hundred thousand dollars with the marijuana.
Good for you.
Hopefully.
Job well done, and I was impressed with your whole crew.
Thanks. Yeah, they, they, the guys, the guys did a really good job.
So.
Did a good job. We just appreciate.
Do the growers wear?
No.
They just don't stay in there very long?
I think they build the tolerance to it too.
I think they build the tolerance to it too.
Sounds like money to them.
Because, because you have to remember, I mean, and unfortunately, but the folks that we arrested, those aren't the masterminds behind the deal. Those are, those are just the folks that they bring in and they're, and they're just, not to me, but to the, to the masterminds and the folks that own the property and, and are making the money, these folks are disposable.
Shannon, they're not the owners, so out there.
Are they making, I mean, the guys that, this family, for instance, are they making good money?
Well, they're living far better than they would be living.
Right.
From Cuba or from, yeah, Central America. They're far better. I mean, the upstairs part of this homeless, it was a little cluttered, but it was nice. There was, you would, you would, if you were to walk in there, you would just think it's a normal family, you know. I mean, they're, they're not terrible people. They're just trying to make a living and survive and.
And the owner of the home, does he?
He's in Florida. I know exactly who he is. Feds know exactly who he is.
But they can't hold him accountable?
Not yet.
It's hard to chase him down.
Haven't been able to apparently.
Yeah, just don't know too much.
I mean, he, he was arrested, the last time we did this, he, they were, it was part of that eight, the different eight home locations that we did all at one time on the one day in Confection, Fremont County, and he, he was arrested on that. I, I don't know what the end result is, was from his, his arrest, but I don't believe he's in prison.
It's a pretty big network too. I mean, Pueblo West had a raid yesterday as well that was tied to the Florida cartel. They're all related.
Yeah.
So they're all with us.
Yeah, it was, it was an experience and, I mean, the guy's wallet was full of credit cards, so he, he had access cards, so he he had access to be able to spend money and live. I mean, wasn't any opulent deal, but it looked like a normal home and I don't know, it's just hard to get your mind wrapped around or it was for me anyway.
And and we knew all we know all the people that come in and out of that place. We we know we've contacted them several times, so I mean, we're not oblivious to it. We know and we know there's at least one other property um here in the county that the guy we arrested yesterday is tied to. We know what's going on there.
Cool.
It's not. And that's and that's the thing is people get impatient sometimes and say, oh, you're not doing enough here, but you have to do it right. And you by far want to get them when the plants are five feet tall, not when they're this big because it well, first off, in the courts system, a plant this big has very little value because you you because it's dead now, so it doesn't have potential value. But a a plant that's almost ready to harvest has a lot more value and value that's part of the penalty if you're growing illegal if you're doing illegal anything.
How much value was there?
It's like stealing pennies versus stealing thousands of dollars. The penalty is completely different.
So where do you think that in Colorado that marijuana was worth yesterday for Colorado?
Oh, well, so potentially potentially, I mean, but so really only the 30 plants were about ready to harvest.
Yeah.
So those were the ones that really had value to them, but if you figure those plants are gonna yield about two and a half to three pounds of marijuana per plant in Colorado, marijuana is going for about $2,500 a pound. So you take, you know, seventy, you know, saying yeah, just to make easy math, $7,000 a plant, 24 plants, 200.
Hundred and fifty grand.
I'm sorry. That was just a joke.
So uh so you move to Fremont County where it's or or Pueblo County where it's legal.
When you were hitting the numbers, I've been going, holy macro.
Well, you see why they do it.
Yeah. What about the value out of state in a non-marijuana legal state?
Right, then it goes, you know, so so this originates from Florida, so now you're talking depending on the market, but somewhere between five and $6,000 a pound. So you triple that, so it goes from $200,000 and that and we're just talking for 30, you know, 24 plants, so you you're looking at yeah, to over half a million dollars.
And they're probably shipping out of state, aren't they?
Of course.
I mean, that.
I don't have I don't have proof of that. But I would bet.
Economics would almost guarantee it.
Yeah, monetarily, why would you do it?
If I'm gonna grow illegal marijuana, then why sell locally?
Right, right.
You might as well go all in.
Competing with the state, so get out of state, you're not on the free market.
All right, sir. Well, thank you for that update. Anything else, gentlemen? All right, appreciate it.
All right. Thanks, guys. Have a great day.
Yep, sir, thank you.
We'll see you next Tuesday if not before.
Good job. All right, uh public comment.
Keep ignoring all those.
Oh, yeah.
Find out the tarp.
All right, hearing none, um shall we draft an email?
Yes.
Uh I know that we had one and.
What happened to it?
Well, I didn't want to get up in the middle of the meeting and.
Oh, you got it around here.
It is around here, yes.
Well, I'm gonna get a cup of mud while you're looking if there's any of that.
She don't have to make some unless she made some.
Take a break.
Yes, I was just gonna suggest maybe we take a quick break.
Joe back here.
Um there's a little bit in the bottom.
So we'll stand and reset. Okay, so the Board of County Commissioners meeting will reconvene. For the record, we discussed at our workshop last week that we needed to send out an email regarding the budget. I meant to bring that up in Commissioner items, I forgot, so we're gonna do that now. With you gentlemen's approval, we'll hammer out an email real quick.
Let's do it.
It won't come from me. I'll forward it to Brendan and she can send it out on behalf of all three of us, but I'll I'm writing it here and then I'll send it to her. Is that all right?
Sure. What did you take off? What book is your input, Jane?
My input was because they weren't privy to the excellent description you gave of the needs, the wants and those, I kind of made it a little more generic as a suggestion. So in the second paragraph, which says, um I'll just read the second paragraph the way you have and then I'm gonna what I just thought might be different, 'cause they didn't get that definition. We are asking each department to revisit the proposed budget, prioritize your department needs, to be purported to demonstrate your.
Prepared, yeah.
Prepare to demonstrate your must haves are going to be what your needs are and what your wants are, but they weren't privy to that. So I I thought suggestion, instead of I would from demonstrate, I would say demonstrate your absolute necessities to continue to conduct business and what is requested budget items that are non-essential so we can maybe just say, these are the essentials to can do business and these are the essentials that are not. And then when they're in front of us, say, well, if they're not essentials.
It gotta be prioritized. Use that word in there.
Well, I'm fine with that. I mean, and it's just a suggestion because they didn't get the what does it mean to be?
That's fine. I still think adding the picture is a is a um is an attachment to it. It's gonna hurt.
Ah, probably. So you were good with this or no?
I had no problem with it.
Okay, with the projected. You said 12% over budget. In reality, it's not quite 12%. No. Maybe we could put $667,000 over budget, make that a real number, 10%. Which reflects approximately.
That's not a bad thing, but let's look at what the 12% line does, 'cause it causes a discussion. You know, gives them.
I just don't want to mislead anybody. If it's really 10, we ought to say 10.
Right, I agree.
All right.
Yeah, but I also agree, let's put a real dollar figure in there too.
Yeah.
Which reflects approximately 10% of the budget.
Yeah.
That's okay.
Are you okay with that?
Sure. It's just that sometimes when the guys, you know, it's easier to pat it, I should say, they when they know what they've got there, it's a little harder when you push them a little harder and then then they but it's okay.
I don't disagree, but I don't think we should.
It's okay. I'm not saying pat it. I think it's a bad thing.
I'm with you. I got it.
So all right, so 10%. Is it 10%?
Pretty close, approximately.
Yeah, it's close. It's very close to 10.
Closer to 10 than it is 11? Get real if you're gonna get real.
Well, let's look. 667,000 versus um it was 663 to 667 over on revenue of 65 million ads. Actually, it could be 11%, uh 10 and a half. I think 10 is reasonable. But when they see how big that number 10% is, you know, we're gonna go, oh, my goodness. Because I don't want to just start slashing without understanding the ramifications. You know, keep going back to the time we thought about a grant to take revenues from the landfill to go to landfill and we didn't take into consideration the that that actually goes into general fund, so I hate to, you know, hate to make too big of a.
Uh so what was the percentage?
10% is okay.
I'd say representing approximately 600 and six. I think you can round 667.9 to 668,000.
Yeah, $668,000 deficit.
Yeah.
Approximately 10% of your budget. Tell us what's above and below the line.
That's that's kind of what I would like and and I would agree with you, prioritize.
It's gotta be prioritized while you're arguing about everything in there.
What's below the absolute necessity, prioritize that.
Right, or above it too. You gotta know what the top, what.
Because we can't cut the absolute necessities or they close their doors.
Right.
So the county commissioners received the preliminary budget as of October 3rd, 2018 and compared the projected revenues against proposed budget requests and realizes.
Resulting in a deficit of approximately 10% or.
Realizes that county budget is approximately $668,000 over budget. Is that me? Which represents about a 10 10% over budget figure. I'm not sure I like that wording, but uh another word.
You say resulting in a deficit of 668,000.
Which represents about a 10% deficit, right?
Right.
I would write what you point to approximately, but you.
How's it say? Comma, 668,000.
But I don't want to sound like.
Oh, my goodness, what are we gonna do?
Okay, we'll come back. After that, then. And so and I agree with this. I think we are um asking each department to revisit their.
Requested budget.
Well, you have proposed budget.
There are proposed, it is a proposed.
It's a budget.
Proves are right.
Yeah.
They're submitted. I don't know. Yeah, proposed budget's fine.
To revisit.
Their proposed.
Or their budget request.
Their budget request.
Budget request is is exactly what we're always trying.
Is your budget request.
It's not well.
Uh comma prioritize.
Prioritized budget request. And be able to discuss. How are you saying?
Prioritize your department needs.
Your your request. Prioritize your request.
And be able to demonstrate your absolute necessities to conduct business and what is requested budget items that are non-essential, prioritize them.
So we are asking each department to revisit their budget request, probably re-prioritize them or prioritize.
Make sure they're prioritized.
Prioritize.
So prioritize them and be prepared to share what.
The impact of a 10% cut is on your budget. We're needing to re they need to discuss the cut line.
Well, I thought we said we were gonna go across the board.
Yeah, I don't want to do that because that would sound like it's across the board.
No. It's the impact of a 10%.
So.
Again, we can leave it off because that's how we're gonna approach it anyway.
Demonstrate what items in your proposed budget are non-essential to keep your operation running.
Yeah, we need to understand the must haves.
Yeah.
I'll write it. We can change it. It doesn't have to be what I'm writing. I'm just trying to get something on paper to.
Yeah, that's that's a good way to to describe it to them. It's that we need to understand their prioritize list of must haves and what they want.
Actually.
So that it's that way we.
We need to prioritize the must haves because you gotta have.
That's gotta have that.
You gotta prioritize the non-essential items.
Right.
That, yeah.
So you know what they're because their request could stand being fun even the cut could stand funding some of their wants.
Absolutely.
So we need to understand that so we can make the right choice. Essentials, you gotta we gotta know what they can't live without.
Correct.
And live without means firing a guy or or not being able to get in a car and go out to a bust.
Right.
Because the car breaks down.
They don't have money to buy gas for the police car.
Yeah, they need to their essentials to execute their mission. Like get my registration at the door.
Uh so let's see, the county budget is approximately $668,000 over budget, which represents about a 10% deficit. We are asking each department to revisit their budget requests, prioritize them and prepare be prepared to demonstrate, let me add this to the commissioners, what budget items are absolutely necessary to operate your department, what items you would like to have and what wants you may have. The commissioners need to know what you need to operate.
Maybe just to execute your mission, your job or the department's mission. Keep talking military terms and government terms, but we are a county.
Commissioners want to know what you need to operate and what you could live without. It's a little simple, but.
And please prioritize those.
Yeah, it's a prioritized.
I agree, you have to prioritize.
They all have to be.
Well, I said prioritize them.
Okay.
I think you're good. I think that's fine.
I think they'll get the message quickly and understand and we'll run this together and let's work out a solution. Which is exactly what we're trying.
That's what he's saying.
Or we'll just take it all from clerk's office. Hold now, we don't need a clerk's office anymore.
We don't need to even have.
Closing statement, we appreciate your cooperation.
Cooperation.
And help.
We look forward to working together to de- develop a county budget, not your department budget.
That's what I'm trying to say, that we're working.
We're gonna work together with each department.
To.
To meet the county's budget, the county's mission.
Yeah, to everybody knows by law, we have to have a balanced budget. I hope they'll.
Still a wag. Wild ass guess. But it's backed with a margin.
Yeah, I think it's fine. I think I would bet before this even goes out, every department knows where we're standing and that we're gonna have to sharpen our blades.
We have to certainly.
And they recognize that's the job that we have to do, the differences, we're gonna have them part of the solution, not.
Not just us dictating.
Right.
So the commissioners want to know what you need to operate successfully and what you could live without. We appreciate your cooperation in an effort to balance a budget for the entire county and the commissioners would like the department heads to have input in how that is accomplished.
I think that's exactly what we're saying.
I'm good with it. I like getting one down the back door and saying, looking forward to working with you.
Right.
Doesn't have to say that. I always look forward to working.
And then I was put at the end of that. That was a joke.
And I laughed.
I know. I was not saying really for you, I was saying for the camera.
All the commissioners look forward to a productive budget process while working together.
Perfect.
Fair enough.
Perfect.
Kisses, Tommy.
Yeah, uh huh, that's right. L and X is um. Yeah, sounds like a country.
And we can let Ryan to clean it up.
Sounds like a winner to me.
Speaking of.
Your ears burning?
It just wet to you, sister.
It wet to me.
Yeah, the email. You wanna you wanna double check that, make sure it's right and then forward that on to the department heads. Can we do that today, you think?
Oh, yeah, I can do it now.
Thank you, ma'am. Anything else, gentlemen?
No, sir.
Hearing no objections, meeting is adjourned.
No, let's not let's not adjourn.